2022, this is the Pinehurst Village Council on January 11th, 2022, moving to the work session. The agenda for the work session is shown on the screens here on the floor and behind me. And we'll have several issues to discuss, as you can see. We also have a closed meeting planned at the end of the work session discussions tonight. I think, as we move into the agenda, and hopefully time will allow, Councilmember Hoagman, you had one issue you'd like to try to discuss tonight, which you circulated yesterday, I think, having to do with the county highway overlay and the meeting that they'll have next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully we'll try to get to that. All right. Mr. Sandborn, would you like to begin with item number two on the work session agenda? And I guess Matt will be here as part of that.
Matt's coming forward, and for the public's benefit. During our annual strategic planning retreat, the council brought up a whole host of many, many topics and subjects that we recognize were important to discuss in the future, but they weren't really pertinent to what we're trying to get done during the strategic planning retreat. So we put that on what we call the parking list, and Matt's going to cover for the council our staff's recommendation on how to proceed with resolving all these questions and topics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all. So as Jeff just mentioned in the document attached, these are the items that were a part of the parking lot list, which required follow-up from staff. And so the sheet that's in front of you, and I just want to confirm, does everyone have a sheet in front of them? If not, I have physical copies. Okay. Then I think the recommendation is just to go through this document, just to make sure that the action steps and the assignments are meeting the intended goals that you all had when putting them in the parking lot. And just one other note is that these are numbered, but they are not in priority order. They're just for easy readability as we work through it. So the first item is the role of volunteers. And so there was a conversation about the engagement of volunteers and how we, and the various roles and opportunities that volunteers play within the community. And the action step that staff recommends is outlining volunteer engagement actions that are currently underway, and then identifying any potential future strategies moving forward. And that would be assigned to administration and to HR. The next one, and please, I think, yes?
Do we ask you a question as we go along?
Absolutely, yes.
The obvious question to me is, what are we trying to accomplish with this action step? And what's our goal?
I believe that from the, from the strategic planning retreat, there was a conversation about what various roles actually exist within the village for volunteers, how we actually leverage volunteers within our work. And so because there was that, that question that was out there, we were working on putting together a document or documents to outline what those current strategies are to continue to engage volunteers, and then from doing that, potentially be able to identify any gaps where we can leverage volunteers in other ways moving forward.
My recollection, too, was that, coming from the Baldridge reports of last year before Matt arrived, we had some discussion on, it was brought to our attention, actually, in those reports, that we, we depend a lot on volunteers, and we talk very strongly about the relationship and the importance of volunteers, but maybe there are other ways we need to be engaging them, informing them, and using those resources. That was my takeaway, and I think that's what drove this particular question. But council members may have different recollections on that, or Jeff.
Yeah, my recollection on there was that it was trying to quantify the role of what the volunteers were doing, still looking at other ways we can, we can leverage volunteers. We have a tremendous community that volunteers a lot. But in the conversation, it was, we have volunteers doing this, volunteers doing that. It's like, well, exactly, what's, what's the amount that they're doing that's going on? And that's how I understood the conversation.
Does that help, Lydia? Is that driving to the right endpoint?
I guess. Okay, so we get this information, and then what do we do with it? You know, I, I don't know. I mean, if you guys think it's valuable, go ahead, but I think our volunteers, to me, it seems like the village has an abundance, I can't say an abundance, we have wonderful volunteers who are very engaged, and I just don't know how much better we can make that by doing this. And if you guys think we can, and, you know, I just, I don't want us to be doing things that maybe aren't going to get us a whole lot of benefit.
I think Lydia has asked a very good question, and to be honest, we and the senior staff, as we were wrestling with this parking lot list, in some cases came across an item that we couldn't really recall what the nature of that entry really was. And so we hope that having this conversation with you, in some cases, might help to clarify, again, what, what interest you had in that subject. I guess what I would offer is if there's not a clear understanding of what we want to accomplish on some of these things, it might be, there might be an opportunity to say, well, okay, we don't need to focus on that right now.
Put it on a back parking lot, or back burner. You know, I think about what we do for our volunteers. We have a volunteer luncheon, we, I don't know what all we do to make our volunteers feel appreciated, but there's so many, we have so much, well, Patrick, you said this when you were running for office, we have so much talent in this community, and I think we do a great job of engaging that talent and plugging them into appropriate places. So if, if we can better that somehow, and the village would benefit, great. But maybe this needs to fall down the list a little bit.
I would concur with that. I, I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze on it, to tell you the truth. It's, I think, and I don't remember the exact context, like you all, as to how this popped up in the parking lot. I think we resolved the main issue we're talking about, and this one was just a byproduct of a conversation ended up being over there. But to have that removed from, from the parking lot as a follow-up action, I've got no problem with that.
Yeah, I have no problem. I do have a question. What happens if it's, if the status quo remains?
We keep getting great volunteers.
Well, aside that, what happens? What, what?
So I'll turn to Jeff on that.
Well, it kind of depends on what angle we're looking at this question from. John described some feedback that we got from the Baldridge folks when, when they did their, did their site visit with us. And, you know, to summarize that, where, where we were criticized was by, in saying that when we say employees, we mean paid staff and volunteers, and we, and we place the same amount of importance on both of those categories of people. But in fact, in practice, we don't, for obvious reasons. Clearly, there are opportunities for us to better recruit, train, and support our volunteers. And that gets toward scratching that itch, but we will never, I don't, I don't think we'll ever treat our volunteers on a, in terms of the emphasis that we, emphasis that we place on developing them, supporting them, the same that we do our employees. It's just not realistic, I don't think.
I think that's, that's the core of the issue I was trying to recall.
Yeah.
It's, it's what do we do to support and, and, and to train our volunteers? We spend a lot of time, and we should, training other staff, fire, police, public services, administration, finance, parks and recreation, and the council gets a certain amount of training and support as well. But are we doing the sort of things that would help our volunteer groups, especially certain of those, like planning and zoning, for example, or historic preservation? Are we doing enough training and?
Systematically.
Yeah, it's not going to equal what a normal staff person would get to, but it's on that line, was the question, I think. How can we do additional support and training to develop and increase the capability of a volunteer, especially in certain categories, as I mentioned? So I, I wouldn't want to see this dropped away, but it clearly isn't.
Want to focus it more on training, then? Is that?
It seemed to me training was the key, certainly as I'm thinking about it today, training is, is the key to that. How do you all see it?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be more so for P&amp;Z or HPC than it would be? And, you know, look at B-PAC and beautification and these, where we got great volunteers, and they're engaged, and they pay attention. And if one of them gets off that committee, we bring somebody else in. And so the training aspect, to me, seems more appropriate for the P&amp;Z, the HPC, the...
It's certainly going to fit a lot better in certain volunteer positions than others, yeah. So that, that would...
And we have taken some deliberate steps with regard to those populations over the last couple of years. Aaron's over there, and he'll probably be monitoring our conversation. I'm sure Darren could elaborate on what we currently have in place for training for our planning and zoning folks and HPC folks, and how that works now.
Well, also, Glenn is here, but your citizens patrol, the people I know who serve on that or who have served, that seems to be a really engaged, dedicated group of volunteers. So we just, we, you look at our spectrum of volunteers, and from P&amp;Z, citizens patrol, beautification, B-PAC, the whole gamut, we've just got outstanding volunteers. I just don't know what more we can do for them, or need to do.
I think at the retreat, planning retreat, we had, we had the flip chart up there for topics where we would sort of get off the rails onto a little bit of a tangent.
Yep.
And it was, it was a way to set that aside, so that we could then go back to our conversation and proceed along the conversation that we were trying to get through for the day. And so going back and looking at a lot of these items, they're, they're interesting items, the kind of items where we could have a conversation on a little tangent like we've just been having, but it doesn't necessarily mean we have to get up and do something about it tomorrow. I, I think, in other words, the parking lot at the retreat was, was meant to help manage the conversation at the retreat and wasn't necessarily a to-do list.
And so, and to your point, Jane, as well, I think that, in some items that is, in some items that is correct and some items that may not necessarily be correct, and so this conversation does help with identifying which ones are requiring that further action step, and which ones, as a council, you all believe is, are necessary to be removed from this list. And we can continue that conversation, you know, then if it's off of this list as a staff.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we, that this become one of the items that we move from the parking lot to the satellite parking lot.
Okay.
Okay, so that way we got it, we can go back to it, but doesn't need to be like...
Thank you.
Is that, is that a, is that suggestion by Councilmember Perezala in the mindset of the rest of the council consensus on that? All right, let's move to number two. Go ahead.
Right. The next one was the Stormwater Master Plan timeline. There was a conversation about making sure the council gets updated with an updated timeline once it was available on elements of the Stormwater Master Plan. This was completed in December of 2021. It was assigned to public services, so I just want to give you all the heads up about that.
What is that up, you have a question? The updated timeline now, is it, it's something available to the public?
I'll defer, again, Jeff, on exactly what the...
There's nothing on our website yet.
Will we put something on it? Can we put it up on the website so the public sees some action, and we, we obviously have accomplished, done something here on this topic?
Well, the completed process will be the completion of the master plan, which is underway. Your point is, let's make sure people know that, which I think we're, is the point of this discussion.
It's an updated time, updated timeline or something?
There is a, yeah, there's going to be a component of web-based public input, as well as in-person public input, and we're just not, we're not to that point yet. So I think the main thing that went to you guys initially was the scope of what we were doing within the Stormwater Master Plan. Our anticipate, we anticipate what we would do is periodically be coming to you and say, here's we are, where we are on the process, where it makes sense, and when it makes sense to say, okay, here's, here's a report out, we've gotten up to this point, here's, you know, and here's where we're still yet to go. But in terms of the public input process, as I said, there will be both digital and in-person opportunities, and within that, we're going to have to explain kind of some of these timelines and things that would be inputs.
I, I expect they'll be, they'll have plenty of public input. I guess at this point, what I'm looking is to show the, the public, the council's output. And the output is, we have a timeline now. That's where I'm heading.
We do have one, so, yeah, it'd be simple enough to...
I would share with the public, let them know.
Yeah.
Right, and I think, well, part of this was the circulation of the contract. I think we were interested in seeing the contract, and we had it before, but we hadn't, we wanted to focus on some of the scope of that, as I think Jeff Benton was saying. So that part, that part's been done, that contract's been circulated to us. Your point, Patrick, is let's report these steps to the public as we make them. Okay.
I agree.
Let's go to number three.
Next one involves Fire Station 93 and its cost projections. As you can see under the action step, it was a, the recommendation was to provide you, council, with a cost projection on Fire Station 93 during the FY23 budget process. And Chief Cole is currently in the process of finalizing a pre-planning template, which will provide the architects with the necessary information to outline that preliminary facility size and a cost estimate. The, the template and that cost estimate is a free service as provided. So I just wanted, right now, it is assigned to fire and administration, and more information will be coming out as we start rolling into the, into the FY23 budget process.
So we'll, we'll see some results here when in May or June, or when will we get there, the architect's estimate and so forth?
By May.
May, thank you. I think it's helpful to put those deliverable months, doesn't have to be precisely to the moment, it's very helpful for me as a council member, so I have a concept. When a citizen asks me, where is that? And I say, well, it's, May is when it's coming up.
And I'm going to use that thought as we move from three to four, to remind Jeff Sandborn and myself, as we've done occasionally over the past couple of years, let's have a six-month calendar, 12-month calendar, of kind of key events we know are going to happen, or when they're expected to happen, reports, do, this sort of thing, just so we remind, especially the new council members, of when certain things happen during the year. We can talk about that at a different time, but I think we've done that before on it. All right, thank you, Matt. Number four, is it?
Item number four, there was a request to add the number of employees per responding business to our business survey, business, or annual business survey, and so the action step is that we're going to explore adding that going into the FY, into the 2022 business survey. We'll be starting those conversations at the end of January into February with ETC.
And I think the reason for that was, we were trying to understand better the size of the businesses.
Yes.
That were responding to the survey.
Yes, sir.
And that, to me, made perfect sense. Are these large companies, smaller ones? Who are the ones responding, and what are they each saying? They'll all have different ideas. That was my recollection.
Yes, sir. That was mine as well.
I believe that's pretty easy to change, so we'll move on from that.
The next item is to explore opportunities for council to meet consultants after the selection process, specifically for any amount under $50,000. The recommended action step is that this item would be discussed at a future work session, as a future work session item. And my recollection on this is specifically around the, as it states, the council to have an opportunity to speak with consultants at some point during that process for under $50,000, and that is, is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, kind of the, the general background on this is that contracts under $15,000, $50,000 are under my contracting authority, and so those typically wouldn't be coming to you for approval, you wouldn't be involved in the process, haven't been involved in the process in the past, but one or more of you voiced an opinion that maybe you'd like to be, have the opportunity to meet with consultants on a case-by-case basis, or all, all consultants or contractors. So I think we need to flesh out that expectation.
Just a few comments there. One, I think we need to sort of separate, I'll use the word consultants from contractors. There is a distinction in the procurement community. There's certain things that probably don't really, at least don't interest me, maybe I don't know about my, my colleagues, but then there are others that are more in the professional services advice area that I am more interested in. And so I, whatever we can come up with as a, you know, a general routine process, I think would be helpful. And one, one thing that might be useful, and I throw this out without, for y'all to consider as you, as you think about this, is that perhaps in, which I find very helpful, the village manager's report, maybe there's a little section in there which just lists a few of the, whatever these ones are, so we just see the topic, you know, painting, painting something, who, who really cares? But I think that would, the flow of information would lessen any sort of surprise, and we'd have a responsibility then to read what's listed there, and to give you a call, or whoever we should call, and say, I've got a question on that, and rather than spend too much time on the topic. I don't know what the sheer number of those, maybe, Jeff, is there, what's a ballpark of the number of under $50,000 actions that we take? Are there, is it in the hundreds, or is it?
No.
No, okay, I'm guessing, that's why I'm asking. Okay. Last.
Jeff, you've had this authority since you got here, right? 50, this, to approve these contracts for under 50?
That's right.
Okay.
Moving on, unless there are other comments, to number five. For number six, more clarity on the phrase "high-quality development and design." And this goes to the comment, when we were looking at our community survey, our annual community survey, there is a question in there that states specifically asking for satisfaction around high-quality development and design, and the question at that time was, what does that, what does that mean, and what does, what does the resident who's responding to the survey potentially think of when they hear the term "high-quality development and design"? And so we, that recommended action step is to provide an opportunity for the community to clarify what that means through the Engage Pinehurst portal, and have an update on that. As of today, we're working on scheduling that to go out, just so we can, we're still working on the language of what that would look like, but just to ask through that online portal, what, what our community may think of when they hear the term "high-quality development and design."
Is there a state-of-art definition of what that means?
I don't think so.
I don't know. I've heard the phrase before, so I can understand.
Again, we're asking the public, and the public isn't aware of any state of art.
Right.
It's what, truly, it's what, what they think that term means. That's what we want, we want to better understand.
Aren't our ratings in this category generally lower than in other categories? Which, to me, it seems like we see low ratings, and we go, what does this mean? So over the past three years, we've said, what does this mean? I'm all for trying to get more of what this means to the public.
Of course, you know, when we use Engage Pinehurst, it's not going to be a statistically valid thing, but it's, it still is a, a good tool for getting just the pulse of what people will think and feel about things. So we thought that was the most appropriate and efficient way to answer this one.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff. That's probably the best way to get some initial feedback. If it isn't what we want, we'll have to figure out something else.
Might lead us to do something else after that, but...
So we have the same approach for number six, number 14, and number 15?
There were, there were a couple, yeah.
I believe it is for six and number 14.
Sure, 15?
Number 15 is discussing a word change.
They're all definitions, and how we can make that more clear to those responding to the survey, or how can we, how their response can be more clear to us.
Although 15, there was a little bit more specific recommended language that the council had talked about when we talked into the parking lot, compared to six and 14, which was getting a pulse of the community definition. Number seven, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, are we okay to move on to number seven?
I think we are, and Jane's point was, maybe those three numbers are, this is similar idea, so as we get to them, we'll just go to the next, because you're going to find a way to get those definitions. I think.
Maybe they all go in one parking space.
Yes, compact parking. Number seven is to, I'm here from Three Rivers Land, Three Rivers Land Trust at an upcoming council meeting. This was completed, it was to invite them to an upcoming council meeting, and that was assigned to the administration, to administration and to the town clerk.
Do we have a, is there a particular date?
Don't we have a date already, actually?
They're coming to the next...
January 25th, isn't it? Yeah, January, our, our meeting two weeks from today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Number eight, further metrics and analysis on engagement and public communication options such as visits to the websites, clicks, click-throughs, time on the website, those kinds of metrics. And so the recommended action step is to provide council with further analysis on those engagement tools and communications, is going to be working on that and be providing you with an update via email.
I think we have all of that data, we just need to roll it, roll it together.
Yes.
Do we know whether, any other communities, is there a gold standard of a community out there that has a way they do this with their own analytics?
There are...
Just to check out that, it strikes me that somebody out there must have figured out how to really...
Do you mean gold standard with regard to what data they're collecting, or how their, what results are achieving, or both, or?
No, actually, really, what they're collecting, visits and so forth.
There are best practices.
There are best practices.
Yeah, for, especially for electronic analysis and data collection around these...
Pay staff time of having to start from scratch, there's, it must be something out there we can copy or...
And we do, yes, sir, and we do collect quite a bit of it, to Jeff's point, and we just have to, we'll get that together and send it over to you.
Look forward to it, thank you.
Number nine is to understand the role of the Moore County Recycling Campaign on our recycling numbers. And so the recommended action step is for public services to continue to monitor Moore County's recycling campaign, and to provide periodic updates to council on how the campaign is impacting the village's recycling numbers. It's assigned to public services, and the rationale for this action step is because since the campaign is just really kicking off, just be able to monitor it throughout and be able to provide those updates to you, especially as we work through it on what that may be.
I think part of this is we're, we're wrestling with how to answer this question as well, given the fact that it's not always clear to us what the, not only clear to really anybody, us or the county or anybody else, what, what the real impact is, given the fact that without having an audit done of what goes to the recycling center, we don't know. So we're wrestling with that one.
But Jeff, will there not be a monetary impact? I mean, I agree with you how, and what you just said, but it seemed like this is supposed to work itself, itself out to a monetary impact in our favor. Is that not what's supposed to happen? As we divert from trash to the land, landfill to recycling and...
I'm glad Jeff's jumping up there. A lot of the answers were questions. Lydia's, Lydia, your, the short answer is yes, the long answer is, to what extent is that financial impact? That part is unknown. The amount of contamination, the more we can reduce it, the less expensive it is to process our recycling, i.e., should be, in theory, less expensive overall. If we had zero contamination, then they would take our recycling at no cost. We would still have the hauling cost regardless, but the processing cost at the, at the MRF would be zero. But that's not where we are at, and until we can get down to a, a reasonable contamination level, and I think reasonable is under 10%, we are not going to realize that level of savings. However, the less contamination we continue to send, the more likely is that we would not see price increases. So there is a financial incentive for us to try to get...
We're not paying a higher cost to switching recycling.
You're right. The more, the more trash we have in it, the more it's going to continue to cost us, and the more they're likely, they are to continue to raise their price to process the materials. So we do have an incentive from, you know, financially, to at least not increase our cost dramatically by reducing, if we, in, if we are able to reduce contamination, we can at least, in theory, hold the line on what it is currently costing us per ton, on a per-ton basis.
And I guess what I'm saying is, if we see some fluctuations, significant fluctuations one way or the other, then the change is working, working or not.
Well, I... The anecdotal experience from the landfill... The result that we would see, associated with the impact that Jeff is describing, is a reduction in our recycling tonnage.
Yes.
Which would be a counterintuitive thing for us to call a good thing. You know what I'm saying? Ultimately, we're trying to say we want more recycling, so if we do see that impact, it's not readily apparent to us to what degree it's attributable, attributable to less contamination...
it's not readily apparent to us to what degree it's attributable, attributable to less contamination, and to what degree it's attributable to more actual recycling, or less recycling being done. Does that make sense?
Without the.
Having an audit, we don't know.
And I have talked to Moore County Solid Waste Services Director about doing an audit. He wants to do one, it's just a matter of when and the coordination of doing it. Now, the one problem we do have is all of our material is commingled with all the material from Aberdeen, and so, you know, who's, as long as we're both in reducing the contamination, okay, we're doing better. But it, it's more going to be a, a view from the Moore County Public Service, Public Utilities, or Public Services, I should say, landfill divisions perspective than maybe as much from our, our own contamination level.
So just that I understand this, effectively, the metric that's used to measure the contamination is a percentage, and I assume that percentage is based on weight, okay, that you have going into it. And the only way to really assess that is to do an audit, which is very challenging to do. Is that, is that an accurate?
This audit, and our stuff has already been commingled with Aberdeen and other community.
Sorry to take up so much time, but, thank you.
So item number 10 is to potentially add library language to goal, goal six, or add it as a new area altogether. And so this action step, recommended action step is completed, and I will give you a highlight that, coming into the balanced scorecard that you all will be looking at the end of January, there will be language provided for you that directly addresses this item in goal six. Goal 11? I apologize, Jason, now, now, in number 11, library services KPI, the same, the same answer there. It's just like with number 10, we will have potential goal, we'll have language around the library services, as well as KPIs that are, that are associated with both it and the Tufts Archives. So we're still working on final language for that, but you will see that in the next, the second, the last meeting in January. Item number 12 is an update on the Western Connector. The recommended action step is to update council on plans for the Western Connector and its potential impact on traffic numbers within the village in an upcoming work session. And this was assigned to planning and inspections. So they will be working on coming at some point in the, in the, in the future to provide you with that update.
What are the plans? Excuse me, what are the plans if we're going to update the plans?
Well, that's what we'll discuss at a work session, but there's, there is no exact plan, as we all know, yeah.
Okay, so then we're.
I think that's a question that'll be answered at the, at the work session in which we have that discussion.
We've got some, I think, loose phrasing in this, the way we're describing this, that aren't.
Okay, I get it.
Concept for a Western Connector out there is not adopted, it's, it's in the Moore County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. It's not in the state's strategic transportation plan.
Right, the last, I read something somebody provided, where the last two quarter, whenever they did this, they do it, I guess, every other quarter or something, and they, some, a while back, they put something in, the last two, they did not. I thought I read that.
And I have a question. The materials you sent us were very helpful. Do you envision a work session being as comprehensive as what is reflected in the materials you sent to us?
Well, I mean, certainly, we can review those materials, but I think there's an opportunity, opportunity for us to update some of that, but probably not all of it.
Okay.
When you say the upcoming work session, you mean when?
Don't know yet.
We don't know yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 13 is a fund balance education for council members. This came from just the conversation that we had around the role of fund balance, potential uses of fund balance. I know that that conversation has continued in some capacity after the strategic planning retreats, but this was, the recommended action step was just to provide a brief explainer on the roles and policies associated with the village's fund balance in an upcoming work session as well. It's assigned to finance, and obviously, that, an apt conversation, especially as we're about to roll into the FY23 budget process.
Since the strategic planning retreat, we've had some dialogue between some of you and Brooke and Doug and myself about the fund balance policy and why it is, the way it is, and how it works. Is this something we still need to come back to you with, or?
Yeah, we save it for our next, when's our next budget meeting, SOP meeting, March?
Well, no, it'd be, I'm looking at Brooke, but it'll be within the next 30 days, based on December 31st, correct?
No, we're.
That update? No.
I'm talking about, for, for the next fiscal year, when you guys come back to us after you crunched what we did in December.
Excellent. Next touch point with you is actually at the next meeting, but that's adoption of the balanced scorecard, which is a way to do this topic, so, Brooke?
Correct, and what you're referring to, John, I believe that you're talking about the quarterly financial statements, that'll be fiscal year '22, that's right, and that'll be likely at the beginning of February, with a mid-year estimate that we prepare, mid-year budget amendment, that'll be in the February time period to see, assess where we are in the year. The next large, significant fiscal year '23, aside from the BSC rollout, there will be an SOP preview that Jeff will present, and I believe that is scheduled in April. But that's after we all have a chance to, all the departments, prepare their budget requests, and compile all of that. And at that time, you'll get the comprehensive preview of the budget.
However, if any of us did have fund balance-related questions, especially as what the fund balance would be at the end of fiscal '22, that could be addressed at your next presentation for December 31. I mean, that's a way to do that, I think.
Sure.
If council members would like to do that.
Take, use that opportunity to flesh out questions, was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've got, I've got two, and I, I've gotten myself in a total lather over this, but I got, it's not pretty. Two, two areas that I'm in a, you know, meltdown mode. And one is, how much money have we got to spend? And that, we've got a cookie jar of money, and we have to use some of it as a cushion, because our revenues come in and our expenditures go out at, at different times, and we have spikes and we have holes and stuff, so. And, but at the end of the year, because we've been conservative, and because we've projected that we might have to spend a little more than we really think we will, and that we're going to receive in revenues a little less than we really hope to, we end up with something left over. And for a long time, I was thinking, okay, beginning of the year, we got a, we got to have a cushion of 30% of what's in the cookie jar, and that's wrong. It took me a long time to figure out what's wrong, and when I did figure out it was wrong, I forgot about it. And so that the next time I went and looked at it, I had made the same mistake again. It's not 30% of what's in the cookie jar, it's 30% of what we expect to spend over the year, which is a whole different number, which is why it, the 30% didn't add up to, you know? Okay, but I still don't know what's going on with the 15% at the end of the year. And I also, for all the different times it's been presented over the last year or so, all the numbers are different. To fill in the, it's hard enough to, I'm getting, beginning to get a handle on the different slots that you put numbers in, but the numbers end up different. So I, I don't have, really, any kind of a handle on how much we've got to spend. And then, there's the second question, is what do we have to spend it on? What are, what are the things we need to spend things on? And there's, there's a list of things, but sometimes they're already baked in to the regular old annual budget, and sometimes they're not baked in, they're extra. And then on top of those things, which are capital expenditures usually, then there's the operating expenses, once you set up something like the library, you have to, and more staff, and more, higher percentage pension contributions and all this kind of. So I don't, I don't feel that I have any kind of a grip on what we have to spend over the next five years or so, either. And I'd really like to know, so that I can come out from underneath my bed and, you know, face the world.
Probably not what you want to hear, but I think you just made the best possible case for what I recommended, which is trust the system, let the staff build the plan based on the priority, priorities that you've identified, and we'll tell you what fits and what doesn't fit, while staying within the limits of the policy that you've set.
Well, that's staying within the limits of the fund balance policy, which is one set of limits, but if we're going to, we also need to prioritize what we spend the money we have on.
I think we kind of have that input from you, and you're going to see it in a draft budget, when I present that to you in April, as Brooke suggested. And if, when you see that draft budget, which is based on our understanding of the priorities that you've set forth, if there's something that doesn't look right, that's your opportunity to tell us, no.
We get an opportunity to reevaluate priorities. That's, that's what, that's what I think you're saying, is that there's that choke point where we get to reassess what are priorities that have been accumulated over a period of time, so.
Let's, let's, let's remember that, that we, we do have an opportunity at that time to say, you know what, even though we think that such-and-such project is a dandy idea.
Yeah.
We don't want to do it now.
That's what he said.
Even though we talked about it before and about how dandy it, it certainly was.
At that point, it's a lot easier to take something out of the plan than it is, than it is to put something in it.
Yeah.
How, how much, well, no, that hasn't been my experience.
Well, we'll, you know, experiences change, but we wouldn't have to.
It's just because it takes the majority to say yes or no, but that's a different thing.
Well.
I'm just saying from the standpoint of making it fit in the, in policy.
Understanding how much money you have to spend is part of the prioritization process.
I, okay, yeah, I, I understand the process, and I'll look forward to being engaged in that. I have one policy threshold that I, I want to see as addressed, and that is this 30% self-adopted policy that the village has as to what it's holding, in essence, what is its basis. The statute for the state of North Carolina calls for a minimum of 8%. That's very, one, that's ancient, and two, it's a little too close, close to comfort for me. But somewhere less than 30% provides us with additional flexibility of funds, and that's what I'd like to have a good discussion.
You're suggesting a conversation about changing the policy.
I am.
Is there agreement among the rest of the council that you want to contemplate changing the policy?
I don't know if, like, if my agreement would be to change the policy, but I don't have any qualms about discussing how we got to that, how we got to where we are and what the dynamics are to change it.
I want to have a conversation on it.
We would need to have that conversation very quickly.
That's right, because you, you don't want to go into the budget process with the April delivery you just mentioned, without having that. So I might, I was going to come back to the idea of, at Brooke's next, next presentation, which is going to be February, we think, well, for the December numbers, let's have that general discussion further on fund balance and how we got to that policy. Does that work?
Look at it, we can take a look to see, see if we can possibly get it. I'm just not sure that I'd be able to pull it together for the second one in January.
Well, let me make it, make a suggestion that might make this easier. What if you just, for the sake of our discussion, ran a numbers with, instead of 30, random with a plug-in 20, plug-in 25, and let's see how that affects the rest of the balance sheet?
Tried to answer that question for you in a very simple way. Brooke?
You did, you know, you gave me those numbers. I, I remember that discussion, I know how much you said each percentage converts to.
Right.
Okay, so I have those, but I don't know how that affects the rest of the paper.
But here's, you have to look at that as a one-time opportunity.
Yes.
It's not a, it's, that's not savings that you can, you can cash in every year, it's a one-time, all it does, if you change that policy today, all it does is it gives you, 5% is, 10% is 2 million, so 5% is one, roughly 1 million.
1.2, yeah.
Right, so by lowering the fund balance, fund balance policy to 25% would give you roughly $1 million that you could spend on other capital needs today. Lowering it to 20% would give you roughly $2 million that you could spend on other capital needs today. That's, I think that's the, that's the easiest way to understand it.
Right, in one-time funding.
The one, one-time thing.
One-time funding source.
How long has this policy been in effect?
The 30% has been in effect for.
Where I got here.
Exactly, maybe since the policy was adopted to begin with.
Well, wait a minute.
The 30% lower end of the.
The lower end.
Lower end of the range.
We have the higher end, which we just changed a couple of years ago.
It was 30 to 40 percent.
30% has been there for quite a long period of time, yes, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I remember it was 30 to 40%, as you described before, and the numbers are not as important to me as the reason for the policy.
Right.
Okay, so philosophically, why do we choose 30%? Okay? And the answer is, for security. And the question is, how much security do we need? All right?
Right.
Security, slack, whatever you want to call it, but additional amounts. And that's where, again, I think we have a staff that's talked about this, and I do understand the point, Pat, about just because we've already done it this way, doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. But we do have an audit that came out with looking at generally accepted accounting principles, and everything is looked at right now, and our books are sitting pretty good.
They are. That's a reason, that's a reason to look at this.
So I guess that, to, to have the conversation, what I'd be interested in, or, which I have no problem with having that discussion, I'm not necessarily condoning changing the number, but I wanted to focus simply on why do we have that buffer?
Right.
Okay? Not, not the numbers, just, just, not the numbers necessarily. Whether it's a million two, whether it's a million four, is not the critical. Why do we have a percentage buffer? And why do we want to have that?
The percentage, what's interesting to me, because of what the state says, where we are, where other communities are, and, you know, and we have a good track record.
Understand.
Okay, so we're having, we're having the discussion. So let's, let's set the time to have the discussion about this, rather than work it in here. But it, but what we're saying is, good guidance to the staff to prepare for that.
Yeah.
Which I would guess would be late January or February's meeting, whenever Brooke's ready for the whole of the presentations she'll make to us. Is that fair? Okay, good points, good points. So that was point 13, I think we're moving on to 14 then, Matt?
Yes, sir. So item number 14 is, again, to better define the community survey question concerning quality of neighborhood. To Jane's point, this will be also, we recommend putting on Engage Pinehurst, and we're working on scheduling that right now. Item number 15 is the, in a similar vein, overall appearance of the village, to experience, to explore potential word changes, to better identify what we mean by that, the conversation was, instead of saying public spaces, we're saying public spaces across the village. And in a, on a similar note, I just added in here, to adjust overall appearance of the village, to clearly define all of the village. So there are a couple of points there, when we talk about public space and overall appearance, that we will, we will be exploring how we can potentially phrase that in a way, going into the annual community survey this year, to, to address those issues. And that'll be over the next couple of months. Then last, on the, on the list, number 16, is to confirm the goal description for number of collisions per 1,000 residents. And right now, this is something that I can give to you, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can quickly follow up on this as well. It's just to provide you all with the definition. That was a question that was, how do we define the term collision when it comes to, it comes to our metrics?
I think I can define that pretty well, no. But this is a, this is a number, if I recall from the discussion at the retreat, that the police department has, or can easily get. This is, we're not going to have to have Jason prepare some software or something.
I thought there was about what qualifies as a collision.
Yes, what qualifies as a collision within, yes. And we, and we have that definition, I just.
Maybe we can answer that right now.
Yeah.
Glenn is over there, I hadn't seen him before.
Put Glenn on the spot.
A collision is going to be anything involving a vehicle and it running into something. That could be with, it could be another vehicle, it could be a tree, it could be, we had one stuck on railroad tracks recently, it could be a brick wall somewhere, anything is going to qualify as a collision with a motor vehicle, when a motor vehicle is involved, as long as it hits something.
But it's not dependent on damage estimates, or how big a dent is in the vehicle, or whatever, it, it's just the vehicle running into some other object.
Right, that, then you would be getting into a dis. Right, that, then you would be getting into a discussion of a reportable collision by DMV standards, but if we get called to a scene and there's been a collision of some type, a report gets taken.
Are we okay with that?
And they're included in this number?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, all of our collisions, that number is included, every collision we've responded to where a report was taken.
So, it's a very helpful conversation. Are we confident that other communities are reporting it the same way and recording it the same way we are, or might they, might they instead be reporting and recording the number of reportable collisions?
So, I would say from my experience, especially when it comes to things dealing with public safety, there may be some differences in the way that they are collected. I can't speak specifically on this one, but I can look into it, I'll make a note to see when we look, especially at our benchmark communities, to see if they provide the same definition that we do. And that concludes the parking lot list. Oh.
There was one parking lot thing that I had that didn't make the list. I wondered if I could throw it out there. In talking about the ETC surveys, I wondered if we could have a question, maybe we already do, but I, I kind of don't think we, we might, on whether residents want to, are satisfied with the numbers of playing fields. We've got questions about whether residents are satisfied with facilities and whether residents are satisfied with Parks and Rec services, but there's really not, it doesn't really zero in on playing fields, and that is something that we've been talking about at West Pinehurst Park, and about whether there really is a resident demand.
Don't, don't we have a survey coming up from the Parks and Recreation folks or something about that?
Up doing the, up doing the master plan, the Park and Rec master plan.
I'm just not sure what you're asking.
Isn't there, aren't we due to receive some sort of master plan from Parks and Recreation?
We are updating the master plan.
Soon, relatively soon?
Yes.
That's a different point, though, than, than asking, including a question in the annual survey.
Oh, okay, well, that's true, that's true.
About, you know, that information from the survey hypothetically would help us in the master plan, for example.
Track it over time. Right.
Well, it's, the master plan for West Pinehurst Park, Pinehurst Park is done. I think the survey question would help to, help us understand implementation of that plan, and what priorities come first, and what things can be, can wait.
Right. So to ask the question would be helpful, I guess, must be.
We, in the process of updating the Park and Recreation master plan, not West Pinehurst Park.
Right.
Plan for the Village of Pinehurst as a whole, there'll be public input, as it'll be a public input process. At that point in time, we may be able to ask that kind of a question that Jane poses, as well as, you know, consider entering it into the ETC survey as well, so you have two different data points. So that process is about to get underway as far as the master planning process for the village through Parks and Recreation, the update to the master plan.
Okay, all right.
So. So do it then?
I think, from my point of view, I agree. I think that's a useful question to include in the ETC annual residential survey.
What use is it going to serve?
Going to provide some input to the Park and Recreation master plan, and I think it helps define for a question that we.
It'd be too late for the Park Recreation's master plan. When, when do we expect that plan to be done, Jeff?
I would expect that we would be done probably by the fall of this year, its budget in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
And I do believe the RFQs have been, have gone out and have to come back, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm not sure where we are on the selection of the firm.
In regard to the ability to affect that plan, we're probably, it would be better to focus on the public engagement that's involved in that plan development.
Yeah, as a primary. I think as a follow-up, the ETC question would just provide additional, either backup or confirmation of the information that we may receive throughout the master plan, or it may contradict it, and if it does, then, you know, we had to ferret that out.
I certainly see where the public involvement can, can help out a lot with that. The question, just as it was phrased on there, from my perspective, I think it would be of little value, just because when you're asking a question like that, it's, it's how many people ultimately feel that they, they have enough recreation facilities or fields or whatever, how exactly it was phrased, you are automatically taking a large group of people who don't necessarily use those. And so the question is, what's the demand that we have for the fields, and what's the supply? And that's the real question you need to get to, and I don't necessarily think that a survey question like that's going to answer that, but you will have public engagement be able to define that better, and that's just what we're looking at, from my perspective.
The issue here is getting everything defined in a, in a proper way.
So a simple survey question, I don't think is necessarily the best route to go there, that's all.
But I think a survey question allows us to track it over time.
No, but I, I think, think of all the other programs we offer, yoga classes, art classes, basketball. We, to, to just pick out just ballparks eliminates all the others, so I think, I don't know, it just, you're only, you're saying it better, Jeff, but there's so many other programs we offer, and now we're just asking about ballfields, but we're not asking about everything else in the ETC survey, so it, it kind of sticks out like a sore thumb, and we're eliminating, eliminating other valuable services we provide.
We do have some other tools and opportunities that I think, to your point, Jane, that we can, we can at least explore to see whether or not it's, there's something that could be added to the survey, or if there's an engagement opportunity, or I know that, for instance, Parks and Rec, they do a, a survey themselves, and so whether or not that there are one or various opportunities that we can potentially try to answer this question, we can come back to you with a recommendation on what that looks like as well.
Well, this was a question, a matter of, of some disconnect between what the Parks and Rec staff had to say about the demand for new ballfields, and what the ETC, ETC survey information and the feedback for the 2019 comprehensive plan and, and other sources like that were saying about the demand as presented by the residents. There were, there were two very, very different things, and this is one way, since we're talking about four and a, five and a half million dollars to build additional ballfields in West Pinehurst Park, probably worth it to find out whether people really want them or not.
I think that the disconnect you're describing is exactly for the reason that Jeff was pointing out.
Yeah, we had the conversation before, and, and I understand what you're saying, and, and so there's a couple of different factors here. Number one, does the overall community want to be spending that money for ballfields? And that's what you're addressing. I, I understand that. What we're also talking about from the Parks and Rec conversation was there's a certain amount of demand that seems to be exceeding the supply, and so with that, they're bringing it up to the, to the council to say, do we want more ballfields? And that, that's the, the balance that I'm seeing on this. I'm not trying to, in this conversation, go one way or another. My point on there for a survey question, like it's, 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 it's been stated, it's not really going to provide us that much value, because again, unless you break it down to the folks that are actually wanting to use ballfields, and do they have them or not, you're not really getting in, into the actual demand of it. So it, it's almost a skewed question, it's, it's a wasted question. So that's, that's how I look at it.
Wouldn't it be a skewed question if you just only asked the people who wanted ballfields?
Well, yeah, it is. I understand. But the, the, the point I get back to is, is, is it, there needs to be a, a look at the demand and the supply.
I understand what you're saying.
But you are exactly right. You ask, and one way or another, it's skewed. Likewise, either way.
I don't know, it's, I've, I've worked with the ETC survey long enough and other master plans to know that the wording is, is everything, as we've heard several times, and I'm still struck by the fact that if you, if you ask a specific question, or one that's defined well enough, you'll get a good answer. So to me, and I have to look at all the other questions that relate to Parks and Recreation in the ETC survey, if you're asking a specific question about ballfields, let's, let's say, that's, you're going to get a, going to get a very specific answer to that. So I'm not sure I understand, Jeff, the, why, why it's not a good answer, because we're using words in other cases, I think Jane cited them, I don't know the language exactly, but.
We're getting really.
How are you happy with facilities and programs?
It, it depends on how, how the question's phrased.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, and we can get in the weeds with that, looking at it. My question to start, the first one question I ask is what values are going to provide for us? What is it going to do to change our decision-making one way or another?
I think, well, here's, here's my solution, is we're going to, we're going to see the ETC survey questions before they go out, right? And I think you're going to do some work on those anyway, Matt, based on other points we just went to. So that would be a chance for us to at least look through and see, you know, how the wording for the current year's survey, which we might see in June, I don't know exactly when we see that, but we do.
Yeah, so I have, I have not yet worked out the timeline for that.
Yeah.
I do know that it, it will be starting up very soon, and so, and I'll get together with Jeff and the senior leaders to make sure that we can get a timeline together for that.
It, it also strikes me in this particular question about ballfields, that, that's one of the most expensive items we have to consider in looking at what the master plan may call for. Jane cited some statistics of other demand that was for a different kind of fields and services that were in early reports to us that seemed to be a little bit in conflict. So I think that needs to be sorted out, Jeff.
I think that, you know, listening to this, I think this conversation's helpful, but I think the way to address the disconnect and the fact that there's the demand on one side versus the community's willing to pay on the other side, the appropriate way to address that question within the context of our community survey is to add it to the list of those things that we, we asked for feedback on, specific to capital projects. You, you know what, which question I'm talking about?
I do, yeah.
Where, where you're racking and stacking against that opportunity against other capital, major capital investments in the community.
That's certainly another look at the same point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, another way to sort out.
So it's not about satisfaction, it's about whether or not it's.
Yeah.
The community's willing to pay for it.
Everything else they're going to consider.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
That's right, yeah.
I concur with that.
That's all right, but also, just to reconfirm, in the master plan, public engagement, this question will come up anyway, right? That's where we left off, and we might hear two different answers. We're at least going to get an answer on ballfields out of the public input, we would hope, and be designed that way. Is that correct, Jeff Batten? Is that your understanding? Okay, then we're, we're starting to cover that. Got budget question on one side to do it, the input to the master plan, another, another way to assess that. Okay.
Thank you all. Any other, any other points? All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm going to stand up while Mr. Sandborn introduces the next three subject areas, which are going to be interrelated.
Go ahead. Jeff's up next. We've got three different topics that Jeff's going to cover for you, to kind of give you some feedback on some questions and concerns specific to downtown that he's been working on over the last month or so. On Street Downing.
Okay, so obviously, we, I had prepared a memorandum relative to the on-street dining that currently goes on downtown, and so a little bit of the background related to when that started, and the reasoning behind it, obviously it's COVID-related. I think we had a speaker earlier talking about whether it was now time to maybe get away from that from the standpoint of the appearance with the orange cones and, and that kind of thing. So the reason I bring this up now, and of course, there's a new surge of COVID situation that's out there right now that, you know, may delay our thought process here a little bit, but I want to bring it up now because in September, the governor signed into law House Bill 890, 890, and that addressed several ABC-related laws, and one of which, when the COVID action was taken to, to allow the local government having jurisdiction to establish the ability for an ABC permit holder to extend their license onto basically adjacent property, in our case, we, as a council, agreed that we would allow that to occur, and that adjacent property was public property on the street, and so that's kind of where it evolved. House Bill 890 allows the local government have its jurisdiction, i.e. you, to determine if you want to continue that as a permanent arrangement or not. If you do, then we have to establish an ordinance and, and codify it in that, in that manner, based on the way the House bill was written and passed. There is not necessarily a timeline that I have found that we have to do this by, we have to have this place in by a certain timeframe. So I think there, we have some flexibility in terms of continuing the way things are going now with on-street dining, or whether we wish to sunset that at a particular date. And if you want to continue it on a temporary basis, we can do that. If you wanted to continue it on a permanent basis, we can do that, but there are a number of caveats that come into play there. One, again, is the ordinance that has to be adopted. Then if it's going to be a permanent measure, the appearance of how it looks and how it's presented to the public in terms of the vertical and horizontal delineation of the, of the territory and how that's addressed, you know, is something that we should take a close look at, because if it's going to be a permanent arrangement, then we want it to make sure it's going to look appropriate, but it has to look appropriate at the same time that it is safe and highly visible. If you decide you want to sunset the current temporary arrangement and go back to what I would, what I call pre-COVID arrangements in the memo, we can pick a date in, in the future that we say that's when we intend to disengage our use of the public space for that purpose. There is a third kind of option in here, too, that, where you could allow the ABC permit holder to extend onto adjacent property or property that is owned by others with their permission, but we would elect not to allow the public street to be used. A couple of things that come into play relative to a fairness consideration is allowing a, a restaurant, for example, to use the public property for their profit, and not allowing a other type of merchant to also do the same, is that fair or not? You know, that's something that, you know, comes into play, I think, at least in terms of our decision-making. Again, I mentioned already the aesthetics, if we're going to do it, I think we need to look at and address how it's going to be done, and have some type of uniform guidelines for what our expectations are for what it's going to look like, and, and how it's going to also still be safe. So, you know, the memorandum is there, whether we want to continue the, under a temporary arrangement, or whether we want to continue this and make it a permanent situation, or whether there's some other option within there that you want to do, which would be, okay, you know, they could extend their permit to another facility if they can get permission from that property owner. I don't know if that's of any value, one way or another, honestly.
Jeff, I've got a question on the fairness point you were just raising, and you've written it in your note here, but your, your point is that, is it fair to let a restaurant-type business use public space and not allow other kinds of business to use public space at or in front of their building? That, that's the basic point, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. So we've got, Eclectic is not allowed to set up in front of their store in the parking space and sell their goods, but we allow a restaurant to do that. So that's, that's the question.
So part of this is, gets back to your appearance question, which you've asked in this part of the memorandum, too. What do we want happening on the. What do we want happening on the streets and sidewalks of the Village of Pinehurst? Do we want dining or not? Do we want retail stores outside or not? That's the fairness and that's the appearance-related question I would suggest that we're looking at.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I was, when I said appearance component, I was primarily focusing on the restaurant space that they would occupy on the street.
Right.
How it is delineated and what it looks like as you approach it and walk up or drive by it. The fairness is exactly as we've been talking here, is why are we allowing one retail operation, i.e. a restaurant, to use public space, but we're not allowing the business right next door to it to do the same? Bumpin' Baby is right beside Dugan's. Dugan's can separate up on the street, Bumpin' Baby cannot. That's the fairness item that I raise in the memorandum.
What are other elements too, right, Jeff, that the fact that we have some restaurants downtown that have previously invested in outdoor space?
That's correct.
Now, but now we're just providing that free of charge to other.
Right, well, restaurants that have their own private space, that's not going to go away. That's private property and they'll continue to do that, operating outdoors as they wish.
I think Jeff's point, and I think is pointed out in here as well, though, is that they invested to have that outdoor space. They went and found a location where they can have outdoor use and indoor use without relying on the public to provide that for them.
Have we had inquiries from non-restaurant businesses over the past couple of years now? For the use of public space?
I have not, that I can recall. I don't know if, maybe when Natalie was here, if anybody had contacted her specific, but I have not. You know, sidewalk sales are not allowed.
We allow a certain amount of stuff to be outside the front door of our retail shops, non-restaurants. What's our regulation on that, or is it just sort of, okay?
I don't know, I think there is a distance from the front door, but I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's six feet, 12 feet, I look at Darren, he's not sure either. But there is a distance of how far away they can be.
And it is defined. It's defined.
I know, like, for example, I think the signage has to be, like, if you have an A-frame or whatever, has to be within 12 feet of the front door. That one, I think, is what that particular number is. As far as extending onto the public property or how far away from their property line or, you know, property lease to run their business, I'm not sure what that delineation is. He's looking it up now, though.
Yeah, I just want to be sure, we're talking only here about on-street dining, this would have no bearing on the sidewalk dining?
That's correct. The sidewalk dining that occurs downtown is on private property where the property line abuts the right of way. So for Drummond Quill, for example, his outdoor dining, this would not have any impact on him at all of what's under his awning, because that is, actually, that's where the property line is, is where the awning comes out. And so he's on his property with his outdoor dining, both in front and on the side.
But one of the issues with, if we use more of the sidewalks for this, if we were to allow that, then we're getting into issues of people conducting themselves, walking from one place to the other. So I don't think we want to be put in a position of having to engage the sidewalk.
I think all Pat was asking is the old Drummond Quill's outdoor space that they had prior to any of this going on, which is what's under the awning.
Right.
This would not, whatever decision you make has no impact on that, because that is on that property.
Private property.
It's not on the public property.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was saying.
So they would have no impact there. Same with Lisi, her outdoors, their outdoor space is on private property, won't have anything to do with that.
I guess the wine shop?
And the wine shop's got their, that's why they're right up against the building, is because of that.
Ones that are infected are going to be Dugan's.
Dugan's does not have the outdoors.
They don't have any private property. Tenia, or what was Tenia, if they chose to do it, they didn't choose to participate over the last couple of years.
They never did, under Tenia, never participated. I can't tell you with certainty if Nico even knows that that was an option, because they've only opened up in, whatever, the last six, eight months.
Right.
There's also, obviously, the impact that on-street dining impacts parking.
To the extent that, the way we had it set up, we would allow the on-street setup to begin around 4:30 if the space was available. I will tell you that some people pushed that timeline earlier to four o'clock to try to make sure that those spaces were blocked off. And so to your point, yes, retail stores were still open until most of them closed at five. So it did take away parking opportunities from, you know, other potential retail use of patrons.
Now, would this affect at all the stop-and-pick-up dinner gang that I've noticed sometimes, that don't drive up? They used to base set aside, or seem to be outside Theo's, and people would run in, get their rent.
So the way, that's where we started with the COVID issues, is the designated pickup lanes.
Pickup lane, that's what I think.
That was the precursor, if you will, to the on-street dining, and then we moved to the on-street dining. Theo's specifically used their on-street dining space after a while, they were setting up out there for a while, but then they used it more as a pickup lane, and that's kind of what they, how they sort of used that space, if you will. So if you go back to the pre-COVID arrangement, you're going to have to find a place to park and run into the store unless the store has agreed, or the restaurant's agreed that they'll bring it out to your vehicle. We would not have a designated curbside pickup lane. After five o'clock typically, if we're talking about mostly dining, dinner, dining time, you know, obviously the parking availability becomes considerably greater as office workers and bankers and all that stuff depart.
I don't recall if you've covered this, but we only have one restaurant that's currently using this opportunity?
Yeah, and actually Drummond Quill right now is closed for the month of January. But yeah, they were the only one that was left doing it.
Are they doing it in this weather?
They are not even open right now. The month of January, he's closed.
Kevin's closed, but is Dugan's closed as well right now?
Dugan's has not been doing outdoor dining for quite some time.
Right.
Dugan's is open, Dugan's is open.
Well, it just started because of COVID. And COVID is still going on. So can we keep it like this temporarily? And, you know, and I, you made a really good argument for, and James, we've been concerned about the appearance of this. There's some really great arguments for not allowing this to continue. So I'm just thinking, with COVID still going on, do we allow this to continue until we think we're at a place where we can then sunset it and go back to the way it used to be?
Yeah, and I think that's kind of ultimately what my recommendation is, is that we try to set a sunset date kind of a little bit further out. I didn't really put one in here, but, you know, in my mind, it was somewhere into the springtime. And that's assuming that Omicron variant is starting to settle down by then as well.
Right now, the weather, the weather's bad, so it's not really being used, so it's not like we're taking candy from a baby right now, because it's not really being used, and, you know, I went and pulled the actual statute on this, what's this, the social districts, and, oh, I don't think we want to go there. You read that and you go, well, this, we're not Beale Street, we're not Bourbon Street.
That's the next agenda item.
We'll get to that, but these two are related.
They are.
All three of these.
I almost made this one agenda item, but the memo is going to be so long, it's like, no, I'm going to split it into.
But I look at the compliance issue, I mean, putting the signs up and the compliance issues, and, but it just seemed like with this, we let it run its course, and do we, we don't have to set a sunset, if we decide to keep going like this for a while, we don't have to set the sunset.
Yeah, there's nothing that I found in the statute that says you have to switch from temporary to permanent. That temporary, as far as I can tell, is still allowed. And so we could continue this with the intent to sunset it at the appropriate time based on COVID status.
To that point, I think it's fair to say that we moved in this direction because of a realization of the seating limitations that were being dictated by governmental, you know, the governor's COVID directives, and trying to accommodate our downtown restaurants' ability to still have a meaningful business. Those restrictions have been removed, but now we're in the middle of this, you know, surge in COVID cases again, so maybe it makes sense to just continue this for some period of time to allow those businesses the opportunity to spread their customers out, if that's what they choose to do, and then when things simmer down, then maybe go back to the status quo.
I've got no problem with that, in the sense of temporarily doing it. I do think that a permanent, adopting this permanently is something I have difficulty in swallowing, okay? And part of that is the equity issue that you talked about. You know, we're having a big celebration, we're closing the roads down, and everybody can bring their wares out to the sidewalk. I got no problem with that, okay? But to simply just say permanently, we're going to do this for the restaurant industry, that doesn't seem appropriate. The other part of this is the purpose of the sidewalks is to walk, okay? It's not to have tables out there. And so especially while the roads are open, and Patrick brought that up before, I mean, it just pushes the people to walk on the streets. And there we have other problems, maybe more collisions. But to sunset it, I think, is appropriate. A couple of things just on the COVID, if you look at the stuff that's going on with South Africa and Great Britain, and we're watching the Omicron variant for that, it's gone about 38 days from the start point, and that's when it starts to peak out. And I don't have a crystal ball, can't tell exactly what's going to happen, but this will burn out like other things do. The COVID virus, coronavirus, is a winter virus, okay? So we're having a peak in this. And the expectation, though, is that certainly when we're in the springtime, this should be down a great deal. And I would think that a sunset of this sometime in the springtime is perfectly appropriate. I'm not sure what the other council members do, but I would.
I would ask if you'd be okay with this, in the sense for planning purposes, if we pick a specific date now? Say that we extend this to May 30th or the end of our fiscal year, some date's certain, and then we just move on. We can always reconsider around that time if things have changed and the medical profession and others are saying, hey, you better do more of this, then we can extend it. That would be my suggestion, pick a date and let's be clear.
I was about to suggest that maybe we plan on bringing this back here for your consideration on March 15th or thereabouts.
Is that too soon?
As the nearest council meeting is.
I'm wondering if that's.
That certainly means that it would continue till then, and then it may continue for another two months.
I agree with setting a date on, I just don't know if the 31st of June is 30th, if the June's.
I don't know of a particular date, I was thinking of also giving a little advance warning to the.
I agree with that, yeah.
That's my point there, is that way they can, can't say, boy, they just shoved this at me, no, we had 30 or 60 days to plan for this. You know, they may have, there may be contracts for the rental of equipment and whatnot.
Jeff.
Totally agree with you.
So you're just saying, set a date now when it's going to end?
Set a date, and then we can always extend it, I don't know what.
It gives them, I would say that that gives them some certainty that, okay, we're going to at least remain in this mode until May 31st, whatever the date is.
Whatever the date is, pick a day.
And at that point, I can communicate that and say, you know, if, for some reason, the next variant blows up and we have to go past that, then, you know, council can make that determination.
Jeff, are there any other changes to the contract that you would recommend, though, even for a temporary period?
I think not. I think given the, I think what we would.
Days of the week? Because it's supposed to be only Friday and Saturday, but it's actually.
It started out Friday, Saturday, then we expanded to the full week, and that happened during US Kids. And then we had some question, or some interest in can we continue to do that?
Right.
And then it went, can we do it then, plus all day Sunday, because the retail stores are closed and offices are closed? So we allowed that, and so that's sort of the progression as to get to where we are now on the, it's every night and Sunday.
Pat's point about allowing folks the opportunity, you know, time to plan for, to stop doing this, we don't currently have anybody doing it.
But Jeff, I think that'll change, I mean, when one restaurant we just talked about opens, and it will, they'll want that street. And if the COVID situation gets worse and the restrictions, as they were a year and a half ago, don't allow indoor dining, then clearly Dugan's will want to come back out to the street, not only to do some dining, but also to-go business.
And he may want to come back out on the street in the spring of the year, I don't know, I haven't asked him, but, you know, the spring of the year is obviously a more desirable time to sit out on the street.
Yeah, I mean, we're in January, we all know that, so.
That's why it might be worthwhile, say, one April, okay? Just throw that mark out there, because you don't have the warmth so much. Another part of this is that if they do change it and they do have lots of restrictions, we can certainly retalk about it again.
So no changes to the contract we have now, or the arrangements we have now, because the contract's a little behind that? And look at the date of April the first, is that a consensus?
I don't know.
I support April first.
And to therefore communicate to those we have a contract with this policy.
I'll communicate that we're going to remain at least until April 1st, with the opportunity to reevaluate based on COVID surge.
Everybody good with that?
Fair.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Very good, thank you.
So you want to move on to the social districts?
Yeah, I got, I got one vote, no, already it sounds like.
No.
Let's, you have a majority.
Do we need to talk about it then? I guess not.
No, it's funny, because I thought, who sponsored this bill? Was it somebody from a big city, somebody like of northwestern North Carolina in teeny tiny little towns? I mean, I would have thought it'd be Charlotte or Raleigh or, you know, something, no. So I don't understand the purpose of this bill.
I don't know the origins of it either, and in fact, I almost wrote that in here, and I don't know where, why it came up, but it's in there.
I can tell you who.
Just for public edification, social district is the ability to designate a geographic area where you can have open alcohol freely walking around. So you could buy a beverage to go, walk out onto the street and go down to, you know, somewhere else, sit on a park bench and have it or whatever.
You could consume alcohol that is purchased within the district.
That's right, and it is, it has some other caveats, it has to be a non-glass, it has to have special labeling on the cup. I will tell you, during the US Opens, men's and women's in 2014, we had a version of a social district. We didn't require it to be a non-glass. That's obviously a big party time, but I can tell you the trash in bushes and underneath benches, and it was everywhere. I mean, it was a, it created quite a bit of trash cleanup every morning. But it was fun for everybody that was walking around, so. All right, so it sounds like social districts are of no interest.
I'm not hearing a lot of support for that.
All right.
So we won't deal with that.
Thank you.
Which will bring you on to.
Get on to the big, the hardest one now, the big topic here. How to manage parking downtown. We obviously have heard some folks speak in favor, some one against, one in for. Davie Leiler, I think, I think her concept is probably looking at parking a little more holistically, including the residential area, and that was not part of the focus of this particular review that Glenn and I did, and Glenn, you can jump on over here. This was specific to, are there ways and means to stimulate parking turnover in the downtown area? And we've laid out options related to timed parking, whether it's two-hour, three-hour, four-hour. Two-hour was just kind of what had been happening in the village going back from at least 1988 until 2008, when it ended. It was two-hour. Paid parking is an option, where people pay, if they're going to stay there for three hours, they pay for three hours. If they're going to stay for one hour, you pay for one hour.
Does pay mean a parking meter, does pay mean?
Does not, yeah, in this case, it does not, that is not what we would suggest. If we wanted to go that way, there are third-party vendors with an app, and, you know, there's some pros and cons with that too, but if we were going to go that direction, that would be our recommendation for us to explore in much greater detail that particular option. There are, again, pros and cons with all of these, there's pros and cons with, you know, perhaps staying status quo as well. There's parking studies that are in here from 2012 and 2017, I just gave you the samples in there of the two areas that were showing as most congested, but as you look through those, even during the most congested timeframe, which is 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we have typically had parking spaces available. I was down there the day at 10 after 11, and there were parking. I was down there the day at 10 after 11, and there were parking spaces available on Market Square, there was parking spaces on Chinquipin, there was parking in front of the Village Deli, there was parking in front of the Theater Building, all available, parking in front of the roast office. Is that the way it is all the time? No, it's not, I'm sure. But the sandlot, or Village Green Lot, as I prefer to call it, was maybe a fourth full. Of course, it's a cold winter day, again, you know, so it's time of year, too. Again, you know, the report is there, we discontinued the two-hour parking for a reason. It does consume resources, both with the Finance Department and the Police Department. It's not a real, it's not as simple as just saying, okay, we're going to have two-hour parking rate tickets. There's a whole impact on finance to process all of that, to how are we going to manage chasing down tickets and things of that nature. Doesn't mean we can't do it, we can do, you know, whatever council's desire is, it comes with a cost, like everything else does. And it's, you know, to what extent do we want to apply those resources to this particular situational issue? I wasn't intending to go into all the details within the memorandum. Obviously, several people that were here have had a greater interest in it, have read it, they spoke to it. So I don't know what your particular interest levels are, or which of any of these options you would want to pursue, or whether none of them are appealing, and you want to think of something else. And I don't know what that is, but.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, just to help the background, and we can look at what we want to do about this and what people's views are. But first of all, in your cost estimates for any of these options, where there was a vehicle involved, you're using the vehicle as a car. That's how you priced it, right? And I was wondering, why wouldn't we just use a golf cart for that, which would be a lot less expensive to purchase and to operate?
It could be, as long as it's set up to be all-weather.
Yeah.
You know, winter days, rainy days, et cetera. Golf carts nowadays are probably, I don't know what they cost for a brand-new one, I guess it depends on how well it's all decked out, but.
Twenty thousand.
But we might be able to buy a car on state contract cheaper than a golf cart.
That could happen. But it could, not only for mobility reasons, let alone cost reasons, that a golf cart might be a way, if we need anything that's being supervised here.
Glenn, you have any other observations on that?
Way to do that.
When we discussed it, we weren't talking about a full-size police vehicle either. We were talking about maybe a very small car, or any of the even. The thought behind the car, too, was just safety, because it would be making frequent stops, so if they got run into by another vehicle, that it'd provide that extra layer for them.
Right, I understand the need for a vehicle of some sort, again, it was just a cost-related thing. I'd like to know a little bit more about the, how this license plate reading goes, and how that all happens, how that all functions together. Can we have a little more about that?
Sure. Want to jump on that one?
And then how the app would work, and what people do, and how the money's collected.
The, so we'll take the LPR first. That would be mounted to the back of a vehicle, or police vehicle. When it rides through the area, it basically just geolocates the license plates of where they're at. And then you come back through periodically, and it's just a software that compares what's there to what was there the last time you came through, to give you the timeframe, so you would know which license plates were in violation. The app, and just back to LPRs, they have greater use beyond just parking, too, for law enforcement purposes, but the app is, starts with the user. This particular one that we looked into would require minimum signage, because it doesn't do it by space, it does it by zone. So based on the map that Jeff has, we'd probably have three zones. And so you would pull in, operate your app, put in your license plate number, which zone you were in, and how much time you wanted. So if you thought, you know, I'm just going out to lunch, I'll buy an hour, you pay your dollar via the app. Say lunch takes a while, about 15 minutes before your time is up, the app notifies you that your time's almost up, so you could extend your time right on the app. The advantage is your, the user is paying a fee, so that's offsetting the cost of the licensing agreement that we would have to get into with the third party. And most people that are visiting are going to be compliant, they're not down there to violate the law, or take up a parking space for extended periods of time, anyway, they're to do their business. And on the enforcement side of it, if you get the second package with it, if a car goes, is shown there beyond that time, it will let our officers know in that area that you have cars that are expired in the spaces. And there's just several ways to handle it. They can, there can be a charge through the app for the citation, they can pay their citations through the app, or we can issue them ourselves. And then there's handheld devices for that as well.
Okay, and the, how is it, well, what's our enforcement on that? And how do we, yeah, what's the enforcement, and how would money flow in this situation?
It would all flow through the third party. So that would, one part it would take off is our front, this staff, having to deal with people coming in to pay tickets. And where would, finance would still have to, we'd have to set up the transfer of the funds from the third party to the village. On the enforcement, for the officers, it would probably eliminate the need for the part-time person. The staff that's on duty at the time would be able to handle that.
Yeah, okay. It would still be a requirement for enforcement, though.
Right.
Yes.
And then anybody who didn't pay ticket. Yeah, and if tickets still didn't get paid through the app, we're still going to have to have a record of who that is, and then there's still going to be some involvement with finance, if they choose to come in and pay in person. Here at front desk has got to know, okay, we got a dollar figure here, whose license plate was that, did that go to? We don't know, you know, without having a process, you know, put in place, set up there. And then if they don't come in, and their pass due, you know, there's additional follow-up staff time that involves finance typically.
Well, I'll just ask one more question, and I'm sure there's others from the council here. As I look at the three options, I'm less interested in going back to where we were than the other two. I'm curious about this license plate reading thing, but maybe less so as we go along. So maybe it's the status quo, but I don't know exactly what you mean by the status quo. So maybe we could define that. Is that where we are today, with the kind of signage we're using, and that sort of thing, Jeff? Or how do you, how would you define the status quo, the way you understand it?
When I look at, when I just look at the raw data from the 2012, 2017, and then just my general occasionally coming through, and I know that's not scientific at all, there are parking spaces available downtown. That's indisputable. I can find a parking space downtown. Can I find a parking space on Market Square in front of Dune Berry? That's going to be, that's where we run into a question and an issue. And the answer to that is probably not. What's the reasonable amount of parking, of walking distance that people are willing, or should be willing, to do? And the dynamic in the downtown area is different than the dynamic at Walmart. You can see the business at Walmart, and you may be parked further away in the parking lot of Walmart than you would have been if you parked around the corner, but still wanted to go to Dune Berry, but you can't see Dune Berry from there. So therefore, it's not, there's not parking available by Dune Berry. So there's a little bit of a mindset, I think, of the public, that downtown parking has its own psychology, and their own dynamics, because you're used to having a suburban parking lot. And in a suburban parking lot, I can park, I still may be 150 yards from the front door, but I know it's right there, I can see it. The rest of the status quo is doing away with all of our signage, and just let things be as they are be. People will park where they want to park, or, and if they can't find a space right in front of their front door of a business, they may very well drive around the block a few times, and they may get fed up, and maybe they may come back tomorrow. I don't know. But to say that we have no parking downtown is just not accurate. We have parking downtown, always. There is always parking downtown.
I'm not sure I'd agree with you completely on that, and I know what you're saying. It's technically.
Special events, thank you for the clarification. You are right. During special events. Yeah, during our special events, yes, definitely. I totally agree with there. And then I think we get into more of the Debbie Layler's kind of concepts and ideas about, you know, parking holistically all around the village. On a day-to-day basis, there is always parking in the Village Green Lot, always.
You and I agree with that, and we've.
Now, is that the preferred location? Depends on the person that wants to park there, and how far away they want to walk, and where they're trying to go to. Our congested area is Chinquipin, from Remax down to the Magnolia Place on both sides of the road, and on Market Square. That's also where the Harvard building offices are, and it's also where Magnolia Place offices are. That's where, you know, a higher concentration of retail is right there, and restaurant. It's, you know, that's the place where we really have more, the most congestion, and probably the highest demand for parking, and we don't have as many spaces right there. You don't have to go very far out beyond that to get into spaces, but, you know, what's reasonable for me is maybe not reasonable for another person in terms of that distance. But I don't know for sure if timed parking, for example, two-hour parking, is going to be a help to that situation, or a hindrance to that situation. In theory, you would think, okay, they're going to turn over spaces, and therefore more parking is available. And maybe that would be the case. As Deb Wyatt pointed out, though, being restricted to a particular timeframe, and I want to spend all day downtown, that two-hour limit doesn't work for them, so.
Well.
I can't say one way or another, whether it's honestly, whether it's good or bad, or right or wrong. What we have, in the minds of certainly some of our merchants, is not adequate. In the minds of other merchants, it is adequate. We've heard from one tonight, from both sides, Deb Wyatt did not want timed parking, she thinks it's fine. Jim Nash feels like that we need to do something, so.
May I ask the question?
Both of them are in that, and both of them are in that congested area that we just talked about.
Sure, sure. My view of this, right now, subject to other input, is that we've made some major strides, imperfect, and not completely successful, over the past couple of years, again, trying to deal with the COVID situation, and at the same time, create a reasonable approach, if not well-explained at all times, or well-engaged with all the landlords and the shopkeepers that we have. But we've made some strides, and I think we need to not do away with that, but try to improve that by better outreach to our landlords, our shopkeepers, our real estate community, whatever. I don't, I can't imagine just taking away everything we've achieved, although it's not perfect, over the past couple of years, and going on to a complete free-for-all system that we've had since the 19.
Are we talking about, when you say that, you talking about like the retail parking courtesy signage that we have?
Correct, correct, correct. And I think there's a way to better manage that, and also a better way to enforce that. And that's what I was trying to engage, what were you defining the status quo to be? Because my view is that the status quo is kind of where we are now, but with some new ideas added to that, and that is, a lot more communication with, as I said, the landlords, the shopkeepers, the real estate businesses, and trying to encourage them to do the right thing.
Right.
And we just never have gotten to that, to that point, even though everybody's frustrated for the past 50 or 60 years, that the same situation exists, but it's because we, it's never been dealt with head-on. So it seems to me, engaging Piner's Business Partners, engaging the real estate community, engaging everybody in this that's got a stake, and coming up with some enforceable, both in terms of peer pressure, and in terms potentially of other enforcement, is a way forward. But to just abandon all that, and take everything off the streets, I think is a bad sign, and doesn't, it doesn't help us.
Suggesting, then, that we permanently mark retail parking spaces? Because right now, what's out there is temporary stuff, that's not probably the most attractive.
Well, in some, yes, in some way, yes. Some way that's, again, there's an issue with some of these solutions, including the status quo, with what we want the appearance of the village to be, and we want to do the right thing on that, and that can be improved from where we are now.
Yeah. There, I mean, if we wanted to keep the signage, just start with, we'll start with that, that says retail parking. To begin with, establishing the more permanent sign, appearance, and look, and all that that matches the village is a simple task. But those signs would need to be permanently mounted to be, to stop being moved around, which they are currently moved around by various people downtown. So if we wanted to designate three spaces here, and two spaces there, and three over there, and four over here, we can do that. The trick on enforcement, though, is, how do we know whether that person is shopping today, or in their office today upstairs in Magnolia Place? I don't know how in the world they're going to know that.
Well, I'm not putting all the burden on the police department here in my ideas, but, and we'll never be able to resolve exactly the question you asked. But to try to work towards that end is what I think we ought to be doing. We can't give this up and just go away and let it go to free-for-all again. I just can't see doing that, personally, with the experiences I've had over the past many years.
Again, I, you know.
You're proposing ideas, Jeff, I'm not asking you to make the decision.
No, I'm not.
I'd like to hear from my colleagues, and I, Lydia was about to ask something a minute ago, so please, let's go to that.
Actually, my question is a perfect, you're the perfect segue. Both Katrin told me one time, their biggest problem was merchant, I mean, merchants, shop owners, who parked in the street, and she was left in the uncomfortable position of having to approach them. Deborah has said the same thing. And then one day, I was downtown a couple of months ago, and someone I know, who, I won't say what her profession was, parked on the street and went into her office. So what is the village's role in addressing that? And what should our role be, and what could our role be? And John, it goes to what you were saying, being more proactive or whatever, because, you know, if what Katrin said to me was accurate, if you pull, and what Deborah's saying, if you pull those people off the street, doesn't that create more available parking?
I think there are layers to this enforceability question. It is true that the general statutes give us the authority to regulate parking. What that means is not really clear.
Okay.
And what I mean by that is, it may not be legal for us to try to enforce a retail-only or a customer-only parking scheme. If it is, then you're still left with a problem that Jeff described, about how our police department, or any other enforcement mechanism knows whether or not that car that's there right now is not, is or isn't engaged in some form of customer-related business during the time they're parked there. That, that creates the opportunity for further frustration by our downtown community, because they're going to demand enforcement, but it's hard for us to figure out how to enforce it.
Well, and to that point, Katrin said, okay, we've seen this car here, and it's been here for two hours, let me call the police and get the police to come do something about it. But then, the police is relying on the hearsay testimony of the shop owner that that car's been there for two hours, so that's problematic.
Yeah, well, that's the timeframe work versus the retail or customer parking scheme, but. Well, and I think, going back to your original question, what role should village play? So if you start at the most simplistic situation is, our role is to provide public parking. Doesn't say provide public parking only for patrons of businesses. It doesn't say that we can, we should only provide parking for business operators and their employees, and not for patrons. It says public parking. Everybody down there is public. Okay, so that's, that's the most simplistic look at it. And then. And then what can we do above and beyond that to encourage? We either have parking decks on Chiquapin because that's where the congestion is, which is not realistic, or we try some other carrot to get people to, that work down there, to park remotely. When I say remotely, I mean, you know, to the outline lot or in the Village Green Lot. The reality is there's hundreds of people working down there, you know? I don't know, any given day, there's maybe, you know, I don't know, 150 people working down there. I don't know what the number is, but it's 150 cars that we somehow have to figure out which one belongs to who. And are they at work or are they patronizing a business? Or did they get off work and then they went down there and had lunch? What are they, how do you enforce that? It's, it's, it's just, it's difficult to figure out what is the right way. What if we give them all stickers? Okay, well, it's raining today, so I'm driving my wife's car into work because I don't want to have to park in the Village Green Lot and walk into my business. So my car sits in the, right in front of, in front of the business all day. I mean, there's, there's ways to easily work around most of these kinds of concepts. These are not the first time we've had these discussions, not the first time we've had these thoughts. We have tried to do engagement with Pinehurst Business Partners, Pinehurst Business Guild at the time, and put the Customer First Parking Initiative. And what happens? First person, I just gone in for 15 minutes to my, to my office and then I'm leaving. They end up parked there for three hours because they got in the office and they got busy and things came up and, well, if he ain't going to do it, I'm not going to do it. So here comes, now somebody else parks there. And now everybody, to put the customer first, just goes away. Because, well, if everybody's not going to participate, then why should I? It's, that's just the reality of what we've experienced. I mean.
Not a perfect world.
No, and I wish I had a silver bullet. I wish I had the right answer and I don't know what it is.
We know that, yeah. Everybody, nobody's expecting a perfect answer here. I don't think there is one.
Deb's.
My point is we've made some strides and we ought to continue to at least make the effort to try to make what we've designed as fair, but also as workable as possible.
I don't have any certain laws.
It's obvious that the retail parking signs that have been there have had some positive effect because in my view, walking downtown, driving downtown, I'll see spaces open that have a retail sign there and then a little while later it's filled. So people are moving, there is some mobility and I think that's one of the issues that you pointed out in your notes, Jeff, that we're trying to create some turnover, some mobility. So there's got to be a way that's not perfect, but that we can continue to validate that and not just abandon.
Would it be helpful to that point, John, maybe, and if the rest of council wants to think about this, is us to maybe define or earmark some percentage of the parking spaces for retail parking only, recognizing there's no way to enforce it. It's an honor system. Some will comply, some won't. Is that where you would like to see us go with some type of parking help? Is not getting necessarily into timed parking, not necessarily getting paid parking, but get into, kind of in trying to encourage that retail parking space to be open and available.
Isn't that what we're doing now?
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's what we're doing currently on a temporary basis. I mean, the signs that we have down there are temporary and they get moved from here to there. I mean, people move them around. We don't move them around, but people move them around.
I'm not in trouble with the look of those signs as maybe some others are. It'd be nice if there were something else and if we did it, it would.
I don't think they quite match our.
Some get moved, but some, some get moved because of the dining on the street. They get moved out of the way after five o'clock, you know, if we have our street dining, which we're, which we will.
What we would run into, I'm afraid, is you put, if we do this permanent kind of situation, you put two parking spaces in front of his business and you didn't put two in front of mine. I want my two in front of mine. And that's going to be the problem that we're going to get, we're going to face if we do that.
I think that's, I fully understand and there's a lot of.
As long as you got.
A lot of holes in this, but I think that even if I'm a retailer and I only have one or no parking spaces in front of my store and somebody else on a different street or down the street from me has one or two or something, that's the way it works out. I'm happier because I know there's retail parking marked and encouraged on my street. It may not be in front of me.
You want to make that bet, John?
Sorry? Yeah, I'd make that bet. I would make that bet because it's the retailers, the folks who sell stuff, right, that have benefited to some degree from the program that we have today. And it's those same retailers who, to a person, to the best of my knowledge, not going to be 100%, make sure they don't park in front of somebody else's store. They park in their remote lots. And I think we ought to reward that behavior and encourage others to do it. And I think that's, that's where there's some engagement by myself, potentially by other council members and working again with the landlords and tenants of these buildings as well as our retailers and especially the real estate community to create a situation that's fair, but does accomplish the end of creating turnover and creating fair use and ample use of our parking spaces. We have to, the point was made by somebody else in a different context. We have to, we have to gain control and management's a better way. We have to gain some management over the streets of Pinehurst for parking and certain other reasons. And I include in that, there's things that have happened recently at the bank building, which is now Agora, right? We've had construction vehicles parked in front of that building for a year and a half. And there's still signs out there for this painter or that contractor that aren't even working there anymore. And we need to do something about that kind of look and that kind of misuse of the parking spaces in front of that building. And you and I, Jeff, a year and a half ago, made a call to the property owner and they said they will manage those trucks and they won't be there any longer. And of course, we know they didn't because, you know, we, we asked nicely, we didn't follow up as much as we could have. And I'm putting my own name on this, not just yours, not yours at all, actually, because you were very helpful and continue to be. But we have to find a way to get better use and better, and fairer use of the streets of Pinehurst for our businesses, for our visitors, everybody. And we have to, we, we just can't walk away from this. I want to go back to where we were before. I don't want, I don't think the license plate thing works. I think the status quo is defined a bit here tonight is where we are. Jeff?
I certainly agree with the, the philosophy and where you're trying to go with it. I understand that and I concur with it. And I'm going to throw something out and I don't know the answer to this, Jeff. It's a question for you. I can think of a few bad things. What would happen if we eliminated the on-street parking in the historic area?
Mm-hmm.
And they just put parking lots. So you have certain areas that you can, but your equity issues, no one's got a parking spot in front of their home place. And now you walk, now you come into the area and you, you all have the same capacity.
Handicap spaces.
And we create more, more room for on-street dining.
You dig the parking lot, you, you do the sidewalk for that, then you can walk on the street. Just create walking streets. No, but the idea of handicap parking and a couple of spots in that area, but when you do it that way and there's not a whole lot of cars that are allowed to be there, it's pretty easy for the police force to say, I think that somebody's not parking there. They're just parking the wrong spot.
Just to be, just for clarification on my part, you're talking about saying, picking a section of downtown or, and saying that whole area is no parking at all?
It goes, it, it's the first step into what Debbie Lawler was talking about. It's a more holistic plan. Now, we don't have a parking, excuse me, a carriage house in, in the, in the area yet, but we may need that, okay? We may need to drive the traffic towards that. The historic area, and I'm not, I'm not condoning this yet. This is a half-baked idea that's coming out right now, okay? But it, we're struggling with all kinds of things. And one of the problems we, we can't do is we can't regulate people to park there who are going to be at the retail places, okay? We can regulate a little bit on the timed parking, but then that brings in a whole slew of other problems. You also talk about the cost of it, okay? And how effective is it? And so I just, well, if you take it away, so nobody's got it and it's just a walking area, because you're going to walk farther at Walmart, you just talked about that. So they're parking over in the greens, you know? I just throw it out there. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm voting for, I'm just throwing it out there and I, any feedback you have.
The long-range comp plan actually had Market Square being, I think, I think your recommendation there about it being a pedestrian.
Pedestrian street, yeah.
Street, so exactly what you're talking about. The, I think, I think just off the cuff here, the, the parking dynamic of reducing parking in the core, in essence, either we have to provide that space somewhere very adjacent or it gets, ends up being pushed out into the neighborhood, which is what, you know, some of the neighbors don't want.
And that's not acceptable. And I understand it. So there has to be a place.
Rightfully so, so.
And it has to be a reasonable location, so it's not going to be parking here in the Village Hall.
If we had.
Jeff has said, there are spaces available. We just need to get people in them, in the, in the Village Green Lot, in our small lot down by the Pine Crest, uses of those better by folks.
And I, intriguing idea, would you allow golf carts to park down there? I'm thinking, I tell you what, one thought that ran through my mind was, it was, it's an original idea, at least to me it was. You, you know, the, the person who shops and comes out of one of those retail stores with some packages, you know, well, where are they, they gonna, they gonna have to schlep somewhere to get those packages into wherever their car is rather than out front where they can throw the packages in there and then go to another store to shop? Because that's, I mean, that's how a lot of people shop, right?
Or you have the loading and unloading zone in front of their shop so they can drive their car up front and pick it up. And again, the, the idea of golf carts, Pat, this is half-baked. It just, you know.
It's, it's good to think about it.
Ask you guys to throw it out there and see what you think.
One, I will say, just to, to the golf cart parking, we are, you know, have started and initiated the landscape renovation project downtown in terms of the review and getting recommendations. Our beautification subcommittee and the landscape architects have, we, we spent a couple of hours walking downtown earlier in December. One of the tasks that they have, assigned to them though, is to identify opportunities to increase golf cart parking downtown without taking away car parking spaces. So whether they'll be able to identify some of that or not, I, I don't know, but as a way to increase parking availability and hopefully maybe desirable locations, that's one of the tasks that they have. That's not going to solve our, our other problem, but just as you, just for informational purposes, so that you know that that's also being, is under consideration in terms of at least be, or under evaluation of where we might can possibly do something like that.
Again, oh, go ahead. Well, there's, there's one other aspect of this discussion that I haven't mentioned specifically. I've talked about working with landlords a little bit more because I think in the end of the day, they're part of this, part of the solution. And I know from talking to a couple of landlords of the larger buildings that they would be willing to consider, and Jeff, you know this, putting in their contracts that tenants of those, let's call them second-floor spaces, office spaces, will not park on the street where the office building is, that they will use these other facilities, the Tough Spark Lot and the Pine Crest Lot. So there are some landlords out there that are cooperative and as far as I understand, probably not all, but, but many. And I think that's, again, an avenue that we've kind of discussed, but we've never really pursued. And my point here now is, and I'm putting a blame on myself, we need to, we need to pursue some things, some other alternatives to try to make the system we have a little fairer and a little bit better working. And I, I think we can make some headway at that.
I'm glad we have Darren here and he's probably not listening to this conversation, but. I, I think I've heard this suggested at some point in the recent past, is it possible that we might be able to make such a contractual arrangement like that a zoning condition? Would require the downtown landowners to have language in their leases requiring employees to park in specific places?
Part of the, as part of the PDO, a PDO, a specific special requirement. I, I've not, I've not looked into that at all at this point, so we'd have to, I would have to consult with, with Newman on that one, just to see if that's, if that's even doable. Because it's not really, it's not really a land use issue, which was what we, it's not really a development regulation. So you'd have to, I, I don't even want to speculate at this point. I can do some more research and see if there's anything out there on it and I can come back to you with something.
That would be very interesting to know. However, if at least some of the landlords would automatically do that.
Yeah.
Then we're, we're there. But, but from a zoning point of view, if there's experience like that in other places, that would be very, very helpful, I think, yeah.
How would we enforce that? Would the village go in and, and fire the employee who parked in the wrong place?
It would be, it would be up to the.
To the PDO.
To the landowners.
Which somehow require the, the business owner to fire the employee? I mean.
I don't know, yeah.
No. What would typically happen is if it becomes part of the zoning regulations, then we could, then we could use the PDO enforcement mechanisms to write up notices.
Permit.
It's, it wouldn't be difficult to administer, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah, I said, some final thoughts. I, I'm not a supporter of the app or the parking meter or the two-hour. I mean, I'm, I'm going down the laundry list of all the things I've heard. I, I do like the idea very much of the nudging the landlords and the business owners. I don't know if, I, I do like the idea of more permanence in the retail parking signs. Do we have also signs that can guide someone who drives into the village to go to the village, as you educated me tonight, the Village Green Lot? Thank you for that. Because I, I use sandlot by default. Do we have any signs that say?
We, we have some signage from outside of the downtown immediate area. We do not have any signage within the downtown area that would direct you.
Maybe take a look at that. Because sometimes the right suggestion will get person in the habit of going there because I'm, there's probably some people don't even know that lot is there, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think one of our recommendations in here was wayfinding signage within downtown to, to direct people to the Village Green Lot as an, as an option.
The, the next to last thing, is there a way, maybe, obviously the business community would need to tell us this, where if you parked in the village lot, you got a 5% discount for shopping on that day? In other words, park in the village lot, come into our store and we give you an extra 5% off. I throw that out there not knowing, but you know, there's nothing like a financial incentive to get people to park a few yards away.
How would you know?
I don't, I, that's my only thing I haven't figured out yet. I was thinking you have a dispenser, but you didn't, you get people could rip it off. I, I'm not sure of the way, but if there was some way to create the financial incentive where people would, could prove, they did the right thing by not taking a spot in front of stores, so they're keeping the traffic flowing and they're, they're going to go in and get a 5% off on a tire show.
Effectively, we do that at Christmas time already with the, you know.
Shop small.
Shop small and, and.
That, don't do that.
If you go over to the, you get a ticket, you put it in the jar at the Welcome Center and your name gets picked or it doesn't at the end of the, end of the day? But yeah, but yeah, maybe that's a way, Patrick, too, yeah.
The last thing, the longer the, I participate in this discussion and hear from constituents about it, we, we need to address the idea of a carriage house or a garage or something because the, hopefully, the amount of people that come to Pinehurst to shop and eat is not going to be static, but it'll be dynamic and there'll be more turnover. And, but we want people to come here and do that and we just got to think a little down the road there.
And a bigger library and archives.
And we got the addition of the library and archives renovation. We're expecting more people to go to that, I assume. Why are we doing it? So anyway, we, obviously that's a bigger discussion and, but.
And that project is in the current five-year plan.
Now it is, now it is.
And, and that concept, carriage concept, we have a rendering, just a sketch.
Right.
And it's along the lines of what Deb Myatt was describing and we all know kind of the location of possibly behind the Holly Inn. I think it was 61 parking spaces, additional parking spaces.
Oh, in, in, was that raised in the land, the one?
And I will say one thing.
There's a lot of parking, additional parking spaces.
And one thing I would say about that is.
And one thing I would say about that is, is when you look at the proximity of the Village Green Lot to a portion of downtown, and you look at the proximity of where that large lot, proximity to another portion of our downtown, it makes that long walk shorter. If you're talking about crossing the street and going right down Market Square versus coming out of the Village Green Lot and crossing Village Green, Cherokee, Chinkapin, cut through the building to get to Market Square.
Yeah, and that, it's a good concept, and it's obviously one we're going to be looking at, but the timing of that, you know, I think we have to keep working on the here and now. So I don't hear much interest here in going back to the, Back to the Future with time parking in two hours, nor do I hear much about the license plate. Did you have a question, Jane?
I have a little spiel.
Well, good. What are you going to support, and then I'll decide whether you can speak? But I, anyway, I'm coming down to, I would call it status quo plus plus with these ideas I've thrown out tonight.
Softer approach is what I'm hearing from you.
Please, Jane, I'm sorry.
My turn?
It's your turn.
Okay. So there's a lot of wrinkles in the parking prune. And if you, if you're looking at just the downtown and turnover parking and so forth, I was very interested to read your materials, Jeff, and, but the question that I had when I got through with it was, we did the two-hour parking for 20 years or something, and I guess abandoned it because it wasn't paying for itself, but was it working? Now, it wouldn't have been perfect. I don't think there's any kind of a perfect solution. I think what we're, it's human nature, it's cat and mouse, it's cat and mouse. And we're going to have to have several kinds of things that we do, and push on different ones of them at different times to try and, and get a reasonable parking management situation. So there's, one question is, do we have a sufficient number of spaces? And it seems to me, it's from my own experience and from what I hear from everybody I talk to, is that on, on ordinary day, you can always find a space somewhere. But there's, there's the two streets, there's Chinkapin and there's Market Square, and those are the ones where you need turnover. It's a management matter, rather than a sufficiency of parking spaces, number of spaces matter on an ordinary day. So how can we get more turnover on those two streets on an ordinary day? And, and maybe we have short-term parking on those two streets, whether it's two hours or whatever it is. But then, and maybe with signage, that can be helpful, that people know. If, if you want to park somewhere short-term, you park on those two streets, but you can park long-term with no hourly restrictions. If you park in the Village Green Lot, or if you park, you know, around the Holly, or various other places that are not those two hot-button streets. And, and then provide, and I think that the two-hour, with, with the hand, with the gizmo and the police car thing, sounds like it's, it's pretty good. It would cost us something in the range of $50,000 to give it a whirl and try it for a couple of years, and, and that's not the, that's not the end of the world, when you compare it to $3,500,000 to build a parking structure behind the Holly. So I think it's, it's worth taking a look at, at doing that, and having short-term turnover parking, which everybody hears about ahead of time, so if you're planning to come in and spend the day shopping and visiting restaurants, and you don't want to have to move your car, then you can just start out by parking in one of the longer-term lots. I also, I also think that we need to be looking at the loading zone questions, making sure that people are using those and using them properly, and you don't get somebody who's working in an office, parking in the loading zone all day long, you know, I mean, this kind of thing. And the construction vehicles, I entirely agree that we need to put some attention on And then, this is maybe a little bit beyond the scope, but it goes to what Debbie Leiter was saying, having it, looking overall, we've, we've got special events, we've got a growing population, we're trying, we've got a different pattern of visitors coming than before COVID. And we're going to have a short-term situation where there's construction on the Lodge and the USGA Buildings, when it's going to probably have a ripple effect on how parking is conduct, gets, happens around the village for, for the period of that construction, which is going to be, what, a couple of years? Or something. And, and then, there's also the question of parking on the residential streets, which drives people who live there nuts. So could we do a little analysis of our expectations for how parking's going to change due to the construction periods, and due to the different patterns of visitors coming over the foreseeable future? If we, how many spaces do we, do we need? What's a sufficient number? I don't know if we did an analysis like that when we looked into a carriage house a few years ago, or not. Maybe we've already got some of those numbers rattling around somewhere in the back of somebody's file drawer. And, and get a little handle on, where do people park in a special event? Special events, if you come, you know, way early, you can get a really nice parking space, and then you're great, but if you come later, you got to park in the bushes somewhere, or else you got to park up here and take a shuttle down? I've done that, and it's great for parking and getting into the shuttle, but then when you're trying to get home, it's hard to get, it's hard to get back. Anyway, I'm in favor of giving the short-term parking with the police thing a whirl. Maybe if somebody had overstayed their short-term thing, they could get a voucher from the store that said, yes, you were really in there shopping, I don't know, maybe that's more trouble than it's worth. Anyway, that's, that's it.
I would be careful about implementing a solution on a trial basis that has us hiring staff.
As you hire a staff?
Staff. Yeah. The, you know, if a year from now we decide we don't want to do that, then you just hire somebody you don't need, yeah. When you look at the, the map that we kind of put together for the zone, we included areas that were beyond Chinkapin and Market Square, and we did that to be fair to, you know, the Roast Office and Cool Sweats, or whatever's over there on the Cherokee roadside. We didn't want to end up pushing parking out of Chinkapin, but just moved over one block, and now we've clogged up parking for those folks. So I think if we do any kind of parking restriction, that's an enforceable type of situation, we probably need to make sure that we include all of the retail territory, in order to be fair to all of them, I think. But what I'm, I think what I'm hearing, with the exception of Jane, is, is more of the softer approach of maybe looking at a way to spread out more permanent retail parking signage, recognizing that some people will honor those and some won't. The wayfinding signage to get you, within the downtown, maybe to get you to some of the ample free public parking that we have. Still trying to figure out a way to incentivize in some way, form, or fashion, or encourage, maybe is a better word, requirements within leases for employee parking to be remote, whether that's the Village Green Lot, or Pine Crest Inn Lot, or Maple Building Lot. I think those were the things that I kind of had heard.
I think that's right, and with some enhancements.
With the exception of Jane's, more, I think you had a little more interest in more the enforcement side of it. Two-hour parking, I think, is where you were leaning towards, is that right?
With regard to designation of parking spaces, is retail the right word, or should it be customer?
We debated changing that word from retail a few months ago, because I think retail seemed to exclude restaurants.
Yeah.
And so we were changing, thinking about changing that word, and maybe customer was, was the word we were thinking about, but we wanted to get away from retail.
I do think there's a better word. I don't know if it's customer, that might be the better word, but I do believe there's a better word than retail than what we have out there.
Better word, yeah.
Even if you look at, look at it the other way as well, if I work in a retail shop, does that mean I can park there? I'm retail.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I think we could definitely look at, I think we could bring back maybe some, if this is the direction that the majority want to do, I think we could come back with maybe a, a map of, here's where we would suggest to equally sparse out these designated parking spaces, to have a few here, a few there, where, with some help with planning office, and where the different retail uses are versus office uses, and some of those kinds of things would kind of play into that, to ensure that we try to be as strategic about selecting those spaces as possible. We could bring back a, a proposal, and see what y'all thought about, about that, and see if it makes, if that makes sense.
That would delineate some things we could do, and, and instructions we could give, or discussions we could have.
Yeah, I mean, I think these, you know...
Yeah, I think you've got it.
Some of the things, yeah, I, I think what I got out of this overall is, is we want to have an approach, but we want to have it a little bit more softer approach, but one that is still maintains some of the things that we're already currently doing, and still may expand upon, expand upon those with some effort in working with maybe leases or businesses to try to strongly, more strongly encourage that.
And I think the soft, the soft approach is, is okay. I think what we're saying is, there's no expectation of enforcement.
Yeah, and I think it's also...
I'm going to predict that we're going to, if we do this in the future, we're going to revisit this question when somebody downtown is going to demand enforcement, and it's going to cause this friction that we're going to have to work through, but...
Yeah, well, maybe we can work around that, or explain that. Jeff Morgan, please.
I think your synopsis of the opinions is accurate. Certainly, I'd rather take a softer approach on there, preserving the charm of Pinehurst and how it works things, but let's not kid ourselves, we're not walking out of here with a tangible solution. And it's not a long-term solution right now. So what we have to do, and as you talk about, coming back with more stuff, and I appreciate that, but I think we need to look at it from a holistic standpoint. How do we want to do this in the whole program moving forward? Because the idea of even, which I totally agree on, the peer pressure idea of, you know, working with the business owners and things like that, but just going to have a marginal impact. Human nature is human nature. Okay, without an enforcement arm to that, you're still, we're going to be back here. Okay? And, but I don't think we have a better solution right now to implement, and that's the challenge. Okay? But I, from my perspective, I bet we're going to talk about this pretty quick, and from my perspective, I don't think we've come up with a good solution tonight.
Well, I see this, too, as not addressing yet the broader issue that some raised tonight, we've talked about at this table, of the broader issue of, you know, parking throughout the historic district, or all in different neighborhoods. This is about the core retail area starting with, and that, we'll see how that can get into other discussions as we, as we go forward.
Got to keep chipping away.
As you, as you consider another word, throwing, to take something from the Masters, throw in the word patrons.
Patrons parking, there you go.
Worked for 70 years in Augusta, Georgia, so...
That suggests somebody who pays a fortune to go to the Masters, as opposed to somebody who's going parking-free downtown.
But Lydia, you've just identified another solution. We could sell the parking places.
That's what you do, that's what you do when you pay for parking.
That's it. This is a big number, I'm talking five digits to the left of the decimal point, I'm not talking, you know, one. Well, we'll see. Well, this has been helpful, I think, and the council listened well, and we appreciated your report. Yeah, I think this is good, and I will, I'll volunteer myself, as I have in the past, Jeff, to work with you, whomever else, to help formulate these ideas, or vet them, and work with other council members to make sure it's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, well, we'll come back with at least a map of ideas of where the, maybe to customer parking, or whatever we call it. We'll noodle on that some more, too. Wayfinding signage perhaps, and then any other ideas that we can dream up. If there are anything else we can dream up. We'll see where that, where that goes in.
Good. Shall we move on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Glenn.
Five-minute break.
Would we like a quick break?
Five minutes?
Yep, and come back and finish the agenda? All right, fine, it's 7:40, we'll come back at 7:45. Please. Please. Call back to order the January 11th, 2022 work session of the Pinehurst Villages Council. Moving down our agenda, we're at item number six, discussion of Fort Bragg renaming input options. Earlier today, at some question in my own mind about trying to supply too much information to the Villages Council on the day of its meeting day, when there's a lot of other work going on, I did circulate around a summary, well, not a summary, the correspondence I'd had with Colonel Scott Pence, who was the Garrison Commander, successor a couple times over from our current Village Manager, about this nomination process, and I've netted out the key points of that. I don't know that everyone's had a chance to read through that document. I did try to write a summary here, which I'll just highlight, and then we'll decide which way you'd like to go on this. On the one hand, the formal process for making nominations to the nine military installations that will get renamed has closed in December. That means that nominations from the public to the National Committee or through Fort Bragg or the other installations was being conducted in the fall, and December was the deadline for that. I have talked directly to Scott Pence, as I said, the Garrison Commander, who was in charge of the process at Fort Bragg, and he reviewed the process and sent information to me, which I've circulated to you. Even though the nomination process is closed to current public input, and somewhat because Pinehurst and Moore County were actually not included in the public input phase of the nomination gathering process, Colonel Pence suggested that if we would be supportive of writing a letter in support of the renaming for General George Marshall, one of our leading citizens in his retirement, that he, Colonel Pence, would take that letter, keep it in the file, and as the year progresses, if there are questions back to him from the National Committee as to other names that might have been in the process, that he would include General Marshall in that. Now, understand, and this is in the material, that the committee at Fort Bragg, having taken public input, came up with their nomination being Fort Liberty, not named for a person, but an issue, or whatever they thought that best captured their spirit at Fort Bragg. So Fort Liberty is the name that the committee at Fort Bragg has forwarded to the National Committee, and it's expected that the National Committee may come back and talk further on that, and that's at the point that General Marshall's letter would be made available to the National Committee. So I have felt this was something important for the Villages to consider. General Marshall was one of the great leaders of the 20th century. He was one of the architects of our victory in the Second World War. He is known as a man of great integrity, in addition to his leadership skills, and thankfully, he lived here for a period of time, and of course, we have our own Marshall Park here in Pinehurst. Some citizens have approached me in recent months about this renaming for Fort Bragg and suggesting General Marshall's name in nomination, and I've been contacted by a couple of historians, one of them, this gentleman I mentioned in my note to you, David Rohl, who is a historian and biographer of General Marshall, and is on the Marshall, in the Marshall Institute in Lexington, Virginia. He would assist in writing any nomination letter that we would choose to write, from the point of view of getting facts and information in the letter. I don't see any staff time being required for this. The letter would be developed by Mr. Rohl and potentially myself, shown to you for whatever changes and corrections you might want to make, and then submitted to Colonel Pence. So that's a summary of kind of where we are in this issue. I know some of you have support for it, some of you have concern for it, so I opened the discussion as to whether the council wants to endorse the idea of nominating General George Marshall as the successor named to Fort Bragg as a part of this process. Questions, comments? Pat?
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of that. I think, you know, Marshall, for whatever reason, I've done a lot of reading about him, mostly listening to books about him when I was driving back and forth between Pinehurst and Washington. But, you know, he was Secretary of Defense, Secretary of State, a remarkable human being, and it is the Pinehurst link to this, with the proximity to Fort Bragg. I like the idea of naming it after a distinguished American and particularly an individual of his stature. There is, for those of you who don't know it, Newark Airport is known as Newark Liberty Airport, so the word liberty gets adopted a lot, whereas General Marshall's rather limited in how many recognitions he has received. And so I'm supportive of a letter or whatever, and I'm sure this process will play itself out, and we'll see what the powers that be decide, but I think it's worthwhile for Pinehurst to speak up for General Marshall.
Other questions, other comments? Lydia, Jane, Jeff?
Go ahead, Lydia. Do you have something to say?
I was going to defer to you to, you have way more experience with Bragg than I do.
Laurie's not picking up the sound.
Jeff, well, both Jeffs have way more connection to Bragg than I do, so I really defer to your, I want to hear your thoughts.
I think both of us have way more connections than Marshall does, too. But ultimately, I think this is moot, and I think the decision's been made to put up a letter, I got no problem with it, just move forward, put up a letter if that's what we want, and move forward. It's proclamation for that, so I don't think it's worth much more time in discussing it. I think it's a very reasonable individual, and this will satisfy some of the folks that we have here and on there, put it in the file, that's fine. Again, I don't think it's going to make much difference, it's already gone through the progress, so.
I have a feeling the United States Congress will have a lot of say before this process plays out, okay?
Well, I think that's true.
Let me just tell you, having been, lived in Washington through the whole BRAC issue, those things get changed way after the process is closed.
I understand, but my point is I'm not sure how much effect we're going to have here.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so we'll put a letter forward. In reality, it's.
Don't know.
Okay.
Jane, any comment?
I don't really think it's, General Marshall is a fabulous person, I don't really think it's up to us, but, you know.
Keep it simple is okay with you, though, I guess. All right, all right. I know our Village Manager has some other thoughts on that, and we, you and I have discussed that, but I think at least there's a consensus here that we should draft a letter and have you review it and send it on and be done with it, but I appreciate your point, Jeff.
There's no harm in sending that letter. I agree that it won't have any impact. I do think, and I made this point before, that if we're going to wade into this question, the best thing that we could do is to support the option that leaders at Fort Bragg prefer. It creates that, it reinforces that bond between us and Fort Bragg, or what is currently Fort Bragg, and.
I agree.
Sending that letter will have no impact. Supporting the Fort Bragg community and the leadership of Fort Bragg will have a positive impact on relationships.
I didn't think about that, that is actually a valid.
On that point, though, and this is something that Colonel Pence and I did discuss, as I mentioned in the note, we were not, we were not in the original process to gain, to have public input. Other communities, including Fayetteville, you know, did that, and I think you felt, knowing that he, knowing as he did about Marshall's connection here in retirement, and General Marshall's personality overall, that it would be appropriate to at least have that nomination come, and also that he expressed the interest that he would try to make sure that on future public input questions that surround Fort Bragg, and Jeff, I don't know how you might handle this when you were Garrison Commander, but that he would certainly want to seek the input from Moore County and Southern Pines and Aberdeen, and as I mentioned in the note, this is kind of a response to take him up on his offer to receive our letter and therefore participate with Fort Bragg along the lines of, I think, what you were just describing, but maybe in a different way. We'd be participating with them in that process, and that kind of helps to build that relationship, I think, too. So, well, anyway, Juan and I have the letter developed. If you have troubles with it at a later time, we can discuss that, but I don't think it'll take too much to do. Is that acceptable, then? All right, I'll proceed. Okay, thank you for that. All right, moving on. Number seven. Doug, update on our Ross and Homestead anniversary, and things are developing, I wouldn't say every day, but almost every day on this. Go ahead, Doug. Oh, okay.
Thanks, Doug.
You want to?
I guess I get in the way of that.
So, okay, you want to talk about the Moore County Highway Overlay Project? Okay, fine. Thanks, Doug.
Okay, so the item that we're going to discuss tonight is an item that just kind of raised the awareness to the council recently with a proposed text amendment to the Moore County Unified UDO. Basically, what's been requested, and this is a citizen's request, is to amend the urban transition district, which currently prohibits high-impact recreational uses. It's currently prohibited in that district. The request would change it to being allowed via conditional rezoning. So I've put a couple of things before you. One is I put a map before you. That map shows the current urban, it shows the current highway, the current highway overlay districts. The stuff in red is what's called an urban transition area, that's what we're talking about, or green, that's what we're talking about, the red is a rural transition. I've circled on your map the areas that are probably of most interest to us with respect to this potential zone change. You can see the areas along Highway 211 across from, generally across from the Pinewell area, and then you have the, then you have the area, the segment on the north side along 15501. I've also circled on the sheet, if you go up in the upper right, you can see where, under the green, it says urban transition highway corridor overlay district. You have two columns there. One is prohibited uses, one is conditional zoning uses, meaning if it gets moved into the conditional zoning uses, they would have to request a zone change in order to get this mapped in that area. So what you can see in the prohibited uses, I've circled high-impact outdoor recreation. What this citizen requests this amendment would do would essentially just move this use over into that other column. I've also, the other thing that I've handed out to you was, and Jane did the, she did the backgrounding on this, I took an excerpt from the UDO, from their UDO, the definition of what a high-impact outdoor is, and there's, there probably could be some concern when you're getting into the urban area based on, based on the definitions. What it says is "public or private recreational activities that have a high potential for nuisance to abutting property owners. This generally includes one or more of the following active recreational uses: batting cages, amusement park, water park, fairgrounds, drive-in theater, open or partially enclosed arenas and amphitheaters, go-kart and motocross tracks, miniature golf, racecar, racetracks, or four or more multiple-use athletic fields or courts." And there's some standards for what those uses have to be, and B, and one of them, Jane's favorite line, "The use shall be totally enclosed by a security fence, a minimum six feet high with three-strand barbed wire or razor wire." So that is what, the action, what the action would do is it would potentially set the stage that these uses could go in those areas that are in the ETJ. set the stage that these uses could go in those areas that are in the ETJ adjacent to Village of Pinehurst, or maybe our growth areas. It requires a legislative action. It's not like it becomes a permitted use. They actually have to come in and get it mapped. But once it become, once it moves from a prohibited section to a, opening up by rezoning, that gives it more legs when they're coming to do, to do a zone change. So from that perspective, you know, some of these uses that are laid out in here can be obnoxious-sounding uses, things like that, nuisances, especially when you start to talk about race car tracks, go-kart tracks, things that have a heavy noise component to it. And when you're looking at some of the areas that we're adjacent to, you do have, you do have a good amount of residential uses. So what I've done, what I've done with the, with the map that I'm showing up here, this is Moore County GIS, and I'm just going to show, kind of show you the area around Pinewild, across from Pinewild and our, you know, our ETJ across 211 that could be affected by that. Really what this is, is here's, here's 211, Pinewild, of course, here's our ETJ. And really what we're looking at would be this gray, this colored area here, this light-colored area, gold-colored area, this is actually Taylor Town jurisdiction, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't apply in that jurisdiction. But what it could apply is in these areas. So you have some large holdings. This is a, this is a large farm. I doubt at this point whether, whether that would flip over, but you do have some of these, some of these larger parcels, these assemblages that are closer in. I'm not sure what the status of this is. It's in two, I think it's in, under common ownership, these two parcels. So it's some of these areas that are largely not developed where you might have that potential concern. I don't know what's, what's driving the current zone change request, or the text amendment, but these are areas that could potentially be impacted by that. So you have the, you have the Highway 211 area, then if we go up to the north side, if I can find it. No, no, here, I got lost. I got lost for a moment. So what you can see is, if you come up here, here's, here's 15501, and it's really becomes this area can, can really be impacted by that. Now, is it going to be largely impacted? Do you have a lot of large undeveloped parcels in there? Well, you do have a fair amount in here. I don't know what the statuses are of that, but would be, what would be more concerning and what would happen during any zone change or public hearing is, there'd be notices sent out, and you have all these smaller assemblages of parcels. These are generally where residential, residential uses are, and those are the people who generally get activated when, you know, zone change requests come in. Let's go back just real...
Darren, where are you on this map?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, 15501?
Here's 15501, yeah.
But where, how far north, and what's that road going east or west?
Okay, this, this is, what is it? I'm trying to look.
Right there.
Here's 73, okay. Here's 73, so Juniper would be right here. So here's Juniper Creek, right here.
All right, where we have some land.
Village Acres is on the left, and number six is on the right of the road.
Correct, that is correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I have a tendency to just go on, so. Same, you know, kind of if we're over here on Highway 211 across from Pinewild, so you can see there's a fair amount of residential around these areas. So you look at, you look at Taylor Town and some of these smaller parcels, they're generally, that's generally where a house is, so those are a lot of the neighbors that are going to, you know, if something would come, some type of action to rezone it, you know, there are some of your stakeholders that are going to naturally be involved, as well as, you know, neighbors across to the south in Pinewild. So that's...
That's Pine Sage, right?
Pardon me?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Pine Sage, that is correct, that is Pine Sage. So this is a request that's been made. It's gone to Planning and Zoning Board. The staff from, from what, from Moore County recommended against, against the PDU amendment, and I think they did the right thing. They spent a couple of years working through and developing the highway corridor overlay ordinance. They, they went out to the adjacent communities within, within Moore County and asked for our opinion. They asked for recommendations, things like that. We provided that opinion, so I think they put a lot of hard work into it. And I think from a, from a staff perspective, we support Moore County's staff's recommendation on this. I did, I reached out to Deborah this morning, and she had said if we do have the concern, their, their public hearing is next Tuesday. I think it starts at 5:30, and they, she had recommended that if we do have concerns that we should, that somebody should show up, state some of those concerns during that public hearing, just so the, so the Board of Commissioners know that, you know, there are some concerns. I've reached out to Southern Pines, Carthage, Aberdeen, and...
Foxborough?
I haven't reached out to Foxborough, but I reached out to the planning staffs of all those other places. I haven't heard back yet from them, so I can't tell you what their opinions are. I would say that Carthage and Pinehurst in this area are probably the ones that are most affected. I'd follow that with, with Southern Pines a little bit, then less or so with Aberdeen. But they're, they, these all have the potential to impact those areas, because those urban transition areas, they're, they're, they're called urban transition because they're generally in an urban environment. If it's in a rural area, yeah, I guess I could see some of these uses, and that's why they're allowed in some of those uses, or in those areas. But as you get closer into the urbanized environment, some of these uses, I think, have the potential to be troublesome for the property owners around it. So that's all I got. I'm not being long-winded tonight.
So if we support this, the idea would be that, I guess Darren, you would draft a memorandum of some sort, that I would sign as mayor, or would sign with the council, or, because to make our impact on the commissioners at their meeting a week from today. Is that the idea?
If, if something wants to come from you as a council, I think that's probably would be, if, if some type of communication, either however you feel, I mean, you can, you can talk about it, but we can, we can draft some type of communication, then I would recommend that someone go up there and actually deliver it to them potentially, so they hear it in person.
Are there questions on this issue? Does anybody feel we should not respond, or, I feel we should respond pretty strongly against adopting that text amendment?
This goes directly in opposition of what we've been saying about this area for how many years, Jane?
Ten years.
Well, 2016.
Even before that.
Well, 2016.
Yeah, at Fairbarn.
First time I ever laid eyes on you.
Yes, well, I feel strongly that we oppose this, but I'm just one.
Well, I, I certainly do.
I want to hear what Jeff says, but you've convinced me.
I'm totally against it.
And it looks like it's, I don't know.
Well, first, first we were fighting a tiny little parcel across from one of our gates, and now we're looking at the rest of 211 being impacted by something we fought on a tiny little parcel across from one of our gates. I mean, this is not...
To get over from being prohibited, it's already been deemed in the UDO to have potential nuisance impact on surrounding neighborhoods, such that they want a six-foot-high security fence with the razor wire on top of it. I mean, I've never read something like that.
That just screams Pinehurst.
Regulation ever. But if we were to, what, what the, this, there's apparently, there's one applicant out there who's got a hot idea for one piece of land and wants to change it for everybody else, okay, which I don't think is, you know, I think we, you always need to be careful, that kind of thing. But his idea is, it's him, is to make it go from absolutely prohibited to conditional rezoning requirement, which sort of sounds like it might be okay, except that, how long do we, do we have to fight and fight and fight on that one little piece of land? It means that everybody would have to keep watching the legal ads. I, I think I'm the only one who reads the legal ads, okay?
You are.
We have to...
We don't need to, because you do.
Well, somebody's going to, eventually I'm going to croak, and then somebody else is going to have to do it. And then people are going to have to come out and duke it out every time. I mean, I don't see that as...
I don't even think a letter, I mean, of course we do a letter, but, I mean, I'm thinking of the county commissioner who's responsible for this area, and I have no problem getting in touch with him.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And you...
I know who you mean, and I'd be happy to do a joint call, yeah.
I am.
How to move forward, so a letter.
Yep.
Bring that, we can deliver it, somebody can attend in person, we could email it to all of the commissioners.
Yes, yes. Full court, full court press.
All the above.
Yeah, I mean, it all stems from that one document of a decision, and then push send, and someone goes to the meeting, you place a phone call, and there'll be no confusion about where we are.
Well, I think, Jane's already thinking of going to the meeting. I don't know if you still are.
I know where Carthage is.
But if we want to deliver something, I mean, I would be happy to do that if the council authorizes that to be done. Any of us could attend that, but I'd be happy to deliver, make one-minute comment or whatever they take, but something like that.
I want to say we're happy.
Our presence would be felt.
Excellent.
I support that.
Good, okay, let's move on.
Thank you for finding that.
Aaron, you said this is next Tuesday?
It's away from tonight, at 5:30, right? I think that's their time, yeah, yeah. And in fact, okay, well, we heard about it because it was on the, their agenda planning meeting, which was last Tuesday. Jane caught it there, and I'm glad we had a chance to deliberate. Okay, so the other, the next item in business is the Ross and Olmsted anniversary. Doug?
So we've made some good progress since we last met with you about a month ago. So actually, thanks to the mayor and a lot of his connections, we met with several subject matter experts, and we have a few more of those lined up. So we also met last week with a representative from the resort, so they have offered to allow us to, in cooperation with them, use some of their equipment to do some, maybe tape some anecdotes that we'll be able to share on our social media, they'll be able to share in their rooms and, and as part of their resort experience. We also have some contacts with people, we're going to ask to set up lectures. The designs for some of the banners and other things are underway, and those are in process. We have picked, I think it's April 26th, that's Olmsted's birthday, that's going to be a community-wide cleanup day, so we're going to be working with Moore County. They have a group that kind of does this on a consistent basis, or has done it in the past, that we're going to kind of cooperate with to make sure that that can go off well. Last time we met, we talked about contacting the Golf Channel. We've done that, we have not heard back. We're going to, if you have any connections with the Golf Channel, let us know, but we'll do the best we can. And we're coordinating with our own rec department to set up some of the events and try to get, like, the role actors that we talked about, get them available, and set up some of the other things that we want to do at our events in the spring and next fall closer to Ross's birthday. I, I don't know if you have any specific questions. The mayor's been very involved. John, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Well, I think one of the things that Kristin and you and I talked about, which all of us in the council want to see as soon as we can, is that timeline of what we're doing and when things will happen, and therefore kind of what needs to happen before those dates. And I think Kristin already had some outline of that.
Yeah, she has an outline, she's putting the dates on it. We, we went over on her whiteboard, she just needs to type it up, so.
Right, right. And then, I'm not sure you mentioned, Lydia and I, and you and Kristin are meeting with Phil Wirs from the Convention and Business Bureau on, I think it'll be Friday morning. He has some general ideas, I think, about things he thinks CVB can do, so we'll kind of lay out where we are in the process, and he can think about where that can go. And he has some ideas specific to the resort, I think, as well, that he'll be discussing, you know, with them.
Yeah, it sounded like they had some pretty significant things planned, so it'll be good to be in touch with them and see what they want to do.
Perhaps, yeah, perhaps, yeah.
One other suggestion, to maybe reach out to Arnold Palmer Foundation, simply because they actually have a apparatus, they do a lot of things in the world of golf. He had an attachment to Pinehurst, and I don't know if the club is doing that or not, but I think it might be a worthwhile base to touch, something he might help us with. No, but he, Ross's birthday, you know, that's the, the connection is Pinehurst and Ross, that's what I, and he used to play, come down and play that course a lot when he was at Wake Forest.
What, what do you know about that? You're saying that they, the Arnold Palmer Foundation, might have a mechanism of...
They want to somehow participate?
Publicize it or some...
I do something, I mean...
Pinehurst is celebrating, okay.
A lot of aftermath to his foundation, hospitals and tournaments he has, and so he left a lot of money for people to do good things. This might be something he'd have an interest in.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. No, that, that's helpful. We, we do have a connection at the USGA that we're in contact with. Also, the, the president of the Olmsted Foundation is speaking next week.
And Lydia, this has just come out.
Yeah, what's this?
The woman you, you and I talked to months ago, DeeDee Petrie.
DeeDee Petrie.
Right. She's been invited by the Women of the Pines to speak, and I got a message yesterday that, that I think she's, well, I'm told she's accepted this, and it's next, it's a week from tomorrow, the 19th. It is a luncheon. And so anyway, she's going to be here. And Kristin, who already had had some correspondence with DeeDee, but this never came out that DeeDee was coming to Pinehurst, Kristin, I think, has written back to her today if she could, or yesterday...
Yeah.
About seeing her, and we should know that in another 24 hours, so you'll be part of that as well.
I'd love to see her.
And I can't actually go to that luncheon next week, but Doug and Kristin hope to, and you may wish to do it, I would encourage you to do that. So I'll get you that information. This has all come out in the last 24 hours. I think she'd be fascinating to me, to meet, to be part of this. And I think that will really help kind of solidify the whole process for the Olmsted piece of this, which is coming up soon. Okay. And the resort is part of it, too. Eric Huster from the resort has been involved with a communications person of theirs. So things are happening, but we need to formalize the timeline and understand what's going to happen when, who's going to do it.
Yeah, we can email that out either later this week or early next week.
Okay, good. All right. Does that bring us to the end of our agenda, then? Are there any future items for work session that anybody wants to suggest tonight? And we'll try to schedule those in? Jane?
Area five.
What's, what's that? I haven't heard a thing about it. I think, I think we'll be hearing about that. In fact...
Is it like a UFO landing place?
Well, the overlay effort, the overlay effort is part of that, so, yeah. All right. I don't know, Jeff, you may have some things in your mind you're maybe working on for work sessions, but if there are, you want to just mention them tonight? If not, we'll go on to our closed session.
No, nothing comes to mind, other than what we brought up in the parking list discussion.
Okay, all right. Patrick, Lydia, Jeff Morgan, we're set, all right. So that's the end of the agenda, then, for the work session, we're agreed on that. And I need a motion to recess the work session and enter into a closed session.
Since I usually get to read these long things, I move to recess the work session and enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318, 11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the addition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in a closed session. We'll take a brief break to close down the other parts of the meeting, and then we'll open a closed session.